Recording in progress.
A call to order the Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Town Council Committee to hold to order at six thirty-five. All councilors are present for a quorum of nine. Commissar in Communications, Councilor Gieske.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the City of Groton swearing-in, and I also received phone calls and questions about tomorrow's hearing regarding the TOPE Committee meeting regarding the S.P. Butler School property. I look forward to seeing citizens there, as I will be there, and the S.P. Butler School's issue is incredibly concerning me because I live in that neighborhood.
Councilor Parker?
I attended the Subvets Veterans Day observance. Wonderful time was had by all, and we had a very nice observance, and they also provided lunch, so that was nice interacting with the sailors and the veterans. I also attended the City of Groton swearing-in ceremony, so congratulations to all, and that's all I have to report.
Councilor Franco?
Thank you. I had communications with people within the community, as well as attended the city swearing-in ceremony for the new council, the clerk, and deputy mayor, mayor, as well as attended the Subvets Veterans Day over in the city, and I have also received some correspondence regarding the Butler meeting tomorrow as well. Thank you.
Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also attended the City of Groton Mayor's swearing-in and Councilor's swearing-ins. Congratulations to Mayor Hendrick and all the new councilors and the city clerk.
Thank you, Councilor McBride.
Thank you. I want to first thank all the residents that came out and voted last Tuesday. Special thanks for those people who supported me in my campaign, and I'm honored to serve for the next two years. I wanted to give special thanks to everyone, so thank you for that. I also want to congratulate the Fitch football team for their sensational win and their ECC champions. They have a big game coming up on Thanksgiving where they'll be hoping to retain the sword, so I wish them the best of luck at that, and if they can secure a win on Thanksgiving, it looks like they would likely have home field advantage in the playoffs, so I wish them well. With that, also just a reminder, as mentioned previously by some councilors, the TOPE Committee tomorrow meeting at five, some important topics to discuss then. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Bordalon?
Thank you. I too want to just thank everyone for coming out to vote this November, no matter who you voted for, it's important that you get out and do such, so again, thank you again for all the support to return. I'm excited for a new term and hope for some greater changes and some more continuity. I too attended the football game at Fitch High School. Congratulations to the Fitch football team, as well as all the seniors that were recognized that evening, that were moving on from football, from cheerleading, as well as marching band. It was just, it's very moving to see the hard work they put in, and a shout-out to all those seniors because this class, that's seniors, were freshman year, either had a non-existence or a partially played season, so to be, come out on top for marching band, winning states, and for football, a cheer to come out, you know, the way that they have is just a good testament to their hard work and dedication to the sport despite the challenges that they overcame, had to overcome. I attended a veterans ceremony at the Foxwoods Casino. They had a parade there. They welcomed the Fitch marching band to play in it this year. They honored all past and current vets, as well as anyone who served as part of their tribal nation that served our country, and it was just very moving and inspiring to see both ends of what Veterans Day means to this country. Let's see, I did receive communications regarding the S.P. Butler School. I reached out to the town manager via text and stated that I thought it was a good idea to have it posted on the social media page, as it was not, so that it's shareable, so it is up there. Lots of questions about it, so hopefully there'll be more dialogue to come. Let's see. I think that's all that I have. Oh, also, human services. There was a post-up on the, there was a post-up on the town website talking about new changes effective December first. I did reach out to the town manager, and if he chooses to speak about it later, he's welcome to, obviously. I was a little concerned about the wording, as it wasn't very inclusive and almost seemed as if it was going to box certain folks out. I did receive some calls regarding it, and I just want to thank the town manager for looking it over and responding in a timely manner. I did see that it was edited. Is that correct, John?
It was edited, but then it was eventually just completely withdrawn.
It was pulled off?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I guess my question to the town manager, I guess, and other communications will be, is that going to come before us? What's the plan? Again, looking at other towns' models, if a person's in need for food right now, it doesn't matter what their income is, that day, they should be able to walk away with a bag of food, because anybody can be experiencing food insecurity, even if you're over income. So I just appreciate you having open dialogue that we did, and it was very positive, so.
And that is the case, that people can. We try to encourage setting up, you know, a time to come in just for time to workflow-type things, but yes. And I've asked Marge Fadulis, the Human Services Director, to put together what, because they are going through quite a bit of food and other assistance, I've asked her to put together kind of a needs list, where she's at on things, what she might possibly need. And then I also expect her to come for the council in January. She has a position retiring and would like to convert a position to another social worker who can help with some of these things, so that'll be coming for the council in January.
So is there more funded, needed for food? Are we going through food?
Well, I think we're okay for right now, but I'll find out in the next week or two.
Thank you again for your correspondence.
Councilor Westervelt?
Thank you very much. I received lots of communications regarding the TOPE Committee meeting tomorrow, property reviews committee, for the lot of effort into what we had come up with, and we're very anxious to see that citizen input is going to be included, so we're glad there's public comment coming out with that tomorrow. I'd also like to congratulate the Fitch football team on an outstanding season. I think they've been, they've really been killing it. They've been doing a great job. And this past weekend, I actually got to spend the weekend watching rugby. The coach of the women's rugby team at the Coast Guard Academy is actually a resident of Groton, and so they went to the National Collegiate Rugby Quarterfinals, where they beat Columbia University and they beat Roger Williams to take the championship for that. So my congratulations go out to the whole team, and I'll just give a shout-out, because another person on that team is my daughter, Rayliann Westervelt. She was the, she was the MVP for the tournament, so that was pretty exciting to watch. And they are going to the national tournament, the Final Four, in Houston on the weekend of December second and third, so we should all root for them. It's a great, a great sport. It's a lot of fun to watch. First time I've seen my daughter with a black eye, which is kind of wild, but it's a great sport, and it really represents this area well, so just wanted to give that shout-out to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Jacob?
Thank you. Similar communications and events attended as the rest of the councilors. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto the approval of minutes. Make a motion to approve the October twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-three meeting minutes. Second. By Melendez, second by Jones. Home in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed abstentions. Care is unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto new business, solar array Flanders Road landfill. Let me have Director Hanover for some background.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Greg Hanover, Director of Public Works. This evening I have with us our sustainability, our energy consultants. I have Rob Clea from Clea Sustainability Advisors and Sam Zecken from CSW Energy. You know, the department along with these two firms is in the process, or will be in the process of putting a request or proposal together to hire a third-party vendor looking to install a solar field on top of the closed Flanders Road landfill, which is immediately adjacent to the transfer station. You know, Public Works has looked at doing this for a number of years, but there've been, you know, many reasons that this was not financially feasible in the past, for whatever reason, tax credits, there's existing ever-source infrastructure that needs to be upgraded. All these things have, you know, made it not really a viable project, but with new legislative changes, it looks like it is now a viable project to, you know, install up to a five-megawatt solar field up on top of the landfill. If it was fully built out, we could potentially have about, I think it's twenty-five acres of the landfill on top as a solar field. And you'll see during the presentation that the revenue the town would receive would totally offset all of our ever-source bills for town buildings, which, you know, is this complex sewer pump stations and whatnot. And is also potential that we could actually, you know, be selling it, I believe, to other towns and getting a revenue stream from this. So with that, I'll turn it over to Rob, and, you know, basically want to go through the short presentation, answer questions, and just looking for, you know, the council to, you know, agree that we should move forward with this project. And once we do get the RFPs and they've been fully vetted, we will be back, you know, before you, to get approval before you proceed. So that'll turn it over to Rob.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Rob Clea with Clea Sustainability Advisors, and again, you have my colleague Sam from CSW Energy. Pleasure to be in front of you all, mayor and council members. You have brought up the PowerPoint presentation already. It is relatively short. If you could go to the next slide. Our goal here is, as Greg mentioned, is to get your concurrence to go ahead with a request for proposals, to see qualified solar developers who offer their proposals about a development at the landfill. And the goal of that is to see if it is truly financially viable, if there is going to be a reasonable benefit to the town from that development. And the program that this operates under is called the Non-Residential Renewable Energy Solutions, or NRES program, and because the town of Groton is a municipality, it qualifies for what is called virtual net metering. So that is a program by which the solar array at the landfill generates its power, puts that power right onto the grid, right at the landfill, and there's a meter that tracks all of the solar energy that's being generated by that big, wide-open space on the edge of town. What you can take advantage of as a municipality is the ability to take that power and offset your beneficial accounts throughout town, as Greg mentioned, the annex here, the police station, large slows, your streetlights, other sorts of things. So when that sun is shining on the landfill and it's turning the meter there, it's basically turning the meter back on your beneficial accounts across town. What is interesting about the program is up to a thousand accounts could participate if they are municipal accounts. Now, the state incentive is also, you can split the state's clean energy incentive, this NRES incentive, with the town and with the developer, which encourages the developer to build that five-megawatt array, because that cost amount, five-megawatt array is probably about a ten million dollar, roughly, just very big round numbers thing to build. So again, those incentives help support that. But Greg had mentioned, one of the big changes actually is at the federal level. The Inflation Reduction Act passed by Congress now allows for federal tax incentives to be applied to these types of solar arrays, and the transmission upgrades necessary to connect those solar arrays to the grid system and to basically upgrade the bid system, and those federal tax incentives can be anywhere from thirty to upwards of fifty percent of the cost of those arrays, so they're quite substantial. And again, so that's this interesting new moment in time, where you have a combination of both state incentives and federal incentives that can help get the array built. Let's go to the next slide. Thank you. And I bring Sam because he's the engineer, and he could explain these images better than I can, but the opportunity at the landfill, and feel free to ask Sam any of the technical questions, can be as large as five megawatts. That's the image on the left by my screen, or it can be a smaller array that would really just focus in on only offsetting the town's accounts. And our goal with the RFP is actually to see what the marketplace will produce, and we will craft the RFP with bid alternatives to allow the bidders to say we can build the oversized version, where it would more than offset the town's electric usage, but then offer you the opportunity to engage with other towns to have their sewage treatment plants, their water treatment plants, their streetlights also benefit from this, and you would in essence get a lease payment for the things that aren't directly going against your electric bills in town. So those are the options, or perhaps it's easier just to do a smaller array, and again, that's where the bidding community will sort of balance, weigh those sorts of considerations of cost and scale and the transmission upgrades that may be different depending, that would be different depending on the size of the array. It's always dangerous when the lawyer and policy person does technical stuff. Sam, anything else to add there on the, on the images?
No, it's a pretty favorable site, and then, you know, both options would work, you know, depending on what the market comes back with.
Yeah, it's a favorable site, obviously, because it's big, wide-open space, south-facing. It's also favorable because in our state's incentive program, it gets an added bonus for being a landfill, so it is treated differently because it's putting solar on what otherwise is just sitting there doing nothing sort of space and isn't putting pressure on farms, on forests, on other locations. So in that competitive, non-residential renewable energy program, they actually get a bid preference of twenty percent. That's probably a good segue to the next slide. If we, thank you, if we get, that changed there, it didn't change on mine, because I'm controlling mine. Our next steps would be with your concurrence, and after answering any questions you may have, we would go ahead with that RFP in this last quarter of two thousand and twenty-three. The goal there is to find that qualified developer. They're your, I sort of liken them to your dance partner for the incentive system that will, the state runs in two auctions in the calendar year two thousand and twenty-four. The goal is to have that partner and then work with that partner to bid into that competitive auction system, the NRES program. Make that submission. Unfortunately, that's a competitive program. You will be competing against other solar arrays around ever-source territory. There are no guarantees that you win. It is a competitive program. Ever-source territory gets eighty megawatts allocated each year in this program. They split it about sixty forty. Sixty percent of the megawatts go in this, in the spring of two thousand and twenty-four, forty percent go later in the fall, so they run two auctions, so there's two bites of the apple. If you don't make it in the first group, you have a chance with your dance partner to bid into the second auction. And then within those, that opportunity, those incentives, they break them. There are certain megawatts for larger arrays like this one, certain megawatts that go to medium, and certain ones that go to small. But again, those are all the elements that will be in the RFP. The bidder community knows all those, and will think strategically about their bidding into that future program as part of their overall package, because again, the goal is to get obviously the best benefit to the town of Groton. That is our, why we've been hired, is to help you realize that benefit, so we are your representative in all of this. But with the balancing of that competitive state incentive program, which is the key to getting things built, you have to sort of always weigh and balance your financial, overall financial benefit to the likelihood you'll actually win that competitive auction process. So RFP is sort of step one after we get your concurrence, but we would be back here before signing any contracts, obviously, because you would be the approval body there. So this is just to make sure we're on the right track at this stage, run the RFP, and then the council has the approval of any contract with that qualified developer that would then set us off into the next stages of participating in the competitive NRES incentive program, and then if we win that incentive, we stay as your town's representatives throughout the construction process, as an owner's rep, to oversee their work, to make sure that they're meeting all their contractual obligations, et cetera, and that's where you get the combination of the engineering and technical support, as well as legal support from me. That's a lot, and I did it quick, so. The last slide just says thank you, if you want to, which you should go, because we do want to say thank you. And open it up to questions and thoughts, and go back to any of the previous slides as well.
All right. Well, thank you for that presentation. Are there now any questions, comments from the council? Councilor Parker?
So, thank you for your presentation. My question is, you said at the beginning, you would be testing it to see if we're going to get back money from ever-source? And what, how long is that process to figure out if we're going to offset our bills?
So excellent question. The goal, when I said testing, I was probably testing the developer marketplace, so to ensure that there are qualified developers who will, when we put in the RFP, they'll actually analyze the opportunity. I mean, we have done so. We actually offered to the marketplace this preliminary design, it sort of helps sort of focus them in. We know the age of the landfill, how it's capped, and sort of all those sorts of things. But those developers want to, before they're, you know, going down the road of a large construction project, want to make sure that it's something that they believe is viable. We anticipate, we often, we've run these RFPs for other towns, we usually get three to five bidders in, and those bids will be a com, will have a bottom line associated with them, of this is the anticipated twenty-year savings to the town if this is built in this manner, at this size, and with this anticipated state ever-source incentive. So the packages will, and we will ask them for all that information. We want that sort of both how much power you're going to generate and how much money you're going to save the town. This will be a little, have a few different types of revenue streams, just the direct bill savings is one part, but the potential at a larger rate to also get a lease or, you know, basically renting your land, your landfill land. get a lease or, you know, basically renting your land, your landfill land for other communities.
Which is, was gonna be my part two. How would they do that if the landfill is, you're talking about other towns, which towns connecting that have EverSource? Or are you saying we would rent out or lease to Stonington or somewhere else? That's what I'm trying to figure out. How does it tie in that we would be able to lease that landfill?
Yeah, you're excellent questions. First and foremost, the only other participating, potential participating towns have to be in EverSource territory because the landfill, its power is being put onto EverSource's grid. Any electricity that is generated there, remember, it spins that meter and it's measured. The leasing part is probably too strong of a word. They're only using your landfill. It's only a relationship with that one contractor and the town is your property. So I wouldn't consider it more. Don't consider it a property lease. But in essence, you're offering those towns the opportunity to spin their own meters backwards for a price, because you're hosting it. You, you have the burden of hosting the solar array on the landfill. So there will be the potential revenue for another town to say, yes, we would like to turn back our meters as well. Because they're in EverSource territory and because they're another municipality, so they're in that sort of group, they can be virtually metered as well. And it's a unique part of this program, and towns who don't have landfills are looking for ways to reduce their own electric bills. And they have, we've helped other towns just simply do that other half, simply finding a developer who has a property, has a solar array that they could just point to virtually and reduce their electric bills.
Okay, third question.
These are terrific, keep them coming.
So if we find out within the next three or four years it doesn't work, what happens?
Which part doesn't work?
If the savings isn't there, is there a way of pulling out? Or what happens if it doesn't work well for us, having it that way?
Yep, terrific question. So, and Sam can help me on the, the sort of details of this. The contractual relationship oftentimes with that developer will include sort of minimum estimates of the amount of power that their solar array is going to produce. So solar arrays, and from the technical side, when you put them out onto a field, they have software that can estimate the amount of sun is going to be hit. The solar panels themselves have a certain rating where they are generating electricity at a certain rate. And you know, on average, how much the sun shines during the year. So you can get a, a pretty good estimate of how much power it should produce. Now, if things aren't producing, that's on them, the developer. They're the ones, they also make their money only when the sun shines and when it produces power. So they have an aligned incentive to ensure that it works. So all throughout the process, they're constantly monitoring to make sure that all of the interconnection and the wires are all pointing in the right direction and the power is, is flowing to that meter that spins. Because when that meter spins, it generates money for the town and it generates money for the developer to pay for the cost of their project. Now, there are also always in these contracts, a force majeure sort of clause. You know, if the world goes sideways, if, you know, things fall apart, there will be, you know, contractual provisions that will unwind the relationship. And for all, all of these contracts put onto that developer, their responsibility for getting things back into working order first and foremost if possible. But if it's not possible, and/or at the end of the 20-year life of the solar array, they're also responsible for taking it off the landfill, restoring the landfill back to its original condition. But the aligned goals are for the town and the developer that it's generating power because the amount, every kilowatt hour it generates is where the dollars, you only get that state incentive when the electricity flows.
All right, thank you. I'll come back in a second.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming here and presenting today. So I'm gathering that the lifespan of this solar array is 20 years. Is that, it's normal?
Sure. Yeah, usually the, the solar panels have a guaranteed production for 20 years. Usually it's like 80%. Some of the electronic, like the inverters have different, like would need to be replaced throughout the life of the project. But, you know, ultimately, the contract that the developer and the town would come to, you know, you see them between 20, 25 years. But that would be something that would have to be worked out with the developer and the, the technology that they're using, that the components they're using.
And I'll only add that the EverSource NRES incentive is a 20-year incentive at a fixed rate. So that the state's sort of flow of dollars in that program is for 20 years, from the moment it actually goes live.
So I'm a little, I know you described the, the NRES thing, but it's a little confusing. So.
It is.
So what, I didn't really understand what it is. So is it, is it a credit system that the state is contributing some money into, into the town, into somewhere? Where does it?
Yeah, no, it, I did go very quickly through that. The non-residential renewable energy solutions is only, so NRES. That's, so let's start with it's only for commercial solar arrays. So we're not talking about solar arrays at houses. There's a whole different program for that. Under this program, the state has decided that it wants to encourage the deployment of solar, and it's willing to pay for the energy that's being, EverSource is willing to pay for the energy that's being produced and all of the renewable attributes, all the good stuff, that this is renewable energy and not using fossil energy or, you know, polluting energy. And it literally pays a fixed price for the, every kilowatt hour that is produced. So in essence, EverSource is buying the power from the array as it's being sort of generated. And it, it does, or it's crediting the, us, the town and subscribers at this sort of fixed dollar amount. And the, why it's a competitive auction is that, let's just say we're in the spring of 2024, we have selected a developer partner. You put in a bid to EverSource saying, we can build our project and be paid $100 a megawatt hour, or 10 cents a kilowatt hour, just to use round numbers. And then someone else bids in and says, well, I can do my project at 80 cents, you know, per kilowatt hour, or eight cents per kilowatt hour, or $80 per megawatt hour. And so all of these bids come in at once, and the EverSource system ranks them all in order and says, we have 30 megawatts, you know, to offer in, in March. And it'll go, and it'll put them literally in order of, you know, lowest, cheapest price to highest price. And once it gets to its 30 megawatts, it'll say, okay, that, that's all we're.
Let me ask it a different way. Say the solar array generated a dollar's worth of electricity, and the town buys a dollar's worth of electricity from EverSource. So that, say this NRES wasn't here. So the solar array generated a dollar's worth of electricity, and the town needs a dollar's worth of electricity. So they would cancel each other out. So basically, it'd be zero.
Yes.
So am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
So what does the NRES thing do in there?
The NRES pays the dollar for the, the electricity that's.
The town's dollar?
For the developer to build it, right? Essentially, they get paid back through this?
Yeah. So are we, are we paying off the develop, the building of the structure or are we paying the electricity?
So we're mostly paying the building of the structure. So of that $100, let's just.
And we're not really paying anything like that.
So the, so let's just say the, the structure costs $10 million to build it. So you get a developer, we're gonna give him $10 million, or somebody will give him $10 million worth of cost. The state through this program is gonna pay some portion of that $10 million.
Yes, they, they will pay quite a bit of that through this incentive. The developer also will get the 30 to 50% federal tax credit. They also have other sort of tax benefits.
So in effect, we would normally be, if we, if the town did this on its own without our stuff, we would be buying electricity and paying for the construction of a solar array. But in this case, the state's helping to pay the construction of the solar array, and then we just get offsets on the electricity.
Right. And, and that, that sort of pool of money that the state is willing to pay, there's enough there to both have, help the developer build it and share some of that revenue directly to the town. So you're.
Offsetting the electricity.
Offsetting your electric bills.
So what's the incentive for the state to do this? Why do they want to do this?
That's something that the state legislature has passed multiple times now in their wisdom to increase the deployment of clean energy.
So they're trying to jumpstart the market, kind of get it going, get these arrays out?
Yep. And that's why they have programs for commercial projects like this. They have programs for residential projects as well. And they are willing to do 100 megawatts a year statewide, 80 megawatts in EverSource territory a year, 20 megawatts in UI territory each year.
So it might be 5 million in Groton, then 5 million in Waterford. I mean, 5 megawatts here, 5 megawatts there.
Yep.
Norwich is another 5. What do we, what's our use of electricity in, in Groton? How much do we use a year?
I don't, I don't have that number offhand, but if you look at the option B, if you put up that slide, that was basically sized to offset 100% of the usage from the.
So whatever that generated, that's our size?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other one is if we wanted to go into, or if the numbers came in correctly, we could then just let more of it go. But also that covers as, as Groton expands, we then have more capacity? Is that, would that be correct?
So right now, it's designed based on kind of a snapshot of the bills that we had looked at. And they allow you to design the, or build a system large enough to offset, like you're allowed to look at like the 12 consecutive months, like looking back five years, that are the most, that account, that an individual account has used. So, so we're really looking back. If there's a known, like new construction or new usage, you can, there is a process to account for that in sizing the system. But generally.
Like if a new school came along, five years from now, a new school came along.
Yeah, generally.
Tap into the second, the first one, option A.
So in that case, this, the first system would be built. I think the developer would, you know, allocate the portion of the electricity that's produced to Groton. And then the rest would be earmarked for some other towns that they have, would have an agreement with. So everything would be like allocated at construction.
For the next 20 years.
Right.
So we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to sort of have excess capacity in there if we.
I would say unless the, the other town that the developer has a relationship, has a decrease in their need. So, but it would be unlikely.
Now, for those new construction, there will be options. You could also do solar at those sites as well. The other thing to always keep in mind in Groton is that this only works for those accounts that are on EverSource territory. So again, always keeping that in mind.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So a quick question. You, we don't need to vote on this. We're just looking for consensus of the council to move forward the RFP.
Correct.
My question is, how specific are we going? Is it just, are we like saying we prefer which option we want? Or is it just, we want to go forward with this and whatever comes back, comes back?
I think the key is if you're open to both options and you say, go ahead. But if you were dead set, I only want option A, they'd want to know that upfront, or option B. So if you're open to, if you want the information for both, then just, you know, proceed as is.
And, and what we've found is that the RFP can be crafted in a way that gets you responses to, and it puts all your options on the table. So you don't have to decide that now. You would have the bidders op, with sort of bid alternates, option A1, option A2, option B. And then that gives you the sort of greatest flexibility and you get a, the broadest picture of what the potential financial benefits.
Okay. So just, just, I think this would be a fantastic project for Groton. I, I'm definitely comfortable with moving forward. And as counselors are speaking, if they could, if they have made up their mind, just, just express that. Okay? Counselor Westervelt?
Thank you very much. Okay, so this is gonna be a 20-year project. At the end of the 20 years, what happens to the solar array? Who's responsible for dismantling it? Is it abandoned in place? What happens with the material that's there?
Excellent question. We build that into the RFP, a requirement for the developer to manage the end of life of, and be fully responsible for the decommissioning of the solar array at the end of those 20 years. And we can also require recycling, other, I mean, we could be as specific as we want to be on their management of it. But it's always on the developer. The developer also is responsible for those 20 years for the operations, the maintenance, when, as Sam mentioned, the power has to go from DC to AC. So there are machines that do that. Those have about a 10-year lifespan. That's, they all, the developer plots that all out in their development because again, they're making money only when it's generating power.
At, okay, at this point though, what is typically done with the solar array fields when they are decommissioned? Where does all that material go?
So there's actually a secondary market for some of the solar panels, because they're still, like they, they, they're not capable of producing 100% of like what their nameplate is at the end of 20 years. Usually it's about 80%. And there still is a market for that. Otherwise, it's a, it's really at the, either the developer, if they have an arrangement for like their discretion for whether it's recycling or, you know, discarding.
And the other components are racking, which are steel, which is recyclable. And then on a landfill, it's usually a concrete ballast or.
Yeah, like gravel ballast or something.
So it doesn't sound like the town would be responsible for trying to figure out what to do with all this stuff when it's done?
No.
Okay. And I do believe that if we were to look at all options and get, get, you know, ideas for both options, that is our best move forward, I think. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Gajewski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for coming tonight and thank you for your wonderful presentation. My question is, is it pot, so as Counselor Jones was discussing, that we put out a bid for our excess energy. Is it possible that EverSource doesn't take that bid? And then what happens to that excess energy? And is there a possibility that we could use it in later down the road?
So, and correctly, if I'm going off course here, the, the key moment where EverSource is sort of deciding is that NRES bidding process. And that is a competitive process. And your solar array will be competing with other solar arrays. And it may not be as, you know, as priced in a, in a way that, you know, if you're in a competition with others. So it may not work the first time you bid. Oftentimes when we, we advise that, and then again, these are discussions with the town, you offer your chosen developer a few chances to succeed at that competitive pricing, often one or two, for one year's worth of the incentive. So if that was the question, you can, if you don't make it in the March auction, you can rebid in the August and September auction. But it's like, another part of your question was, well, let's say we have more load or, you know, or this isn't covering all of our load, is that? Yeah. So I, so if you're developing new property, so this would have to be city-owned build, this only works for your city meters. We are consultants to the town and we have helped towns, schools, you know, deploy solar or otherwise. You can, you can do other sort of opportunities for solar at those facilities themselves. We even looked at the opportunity for solar here in the, the Annex complex. Turned out that it was difficult because it would require canopies over the parking lots and they're very expensive. So to the extent that you have new construction or additional construction or additional load, we can always look for sort of opportunities to deploy solar at the site of that building where it is. And so it doesn't have to be this virtual connection to the landfill if there's additional opportunities. Sam, I don't know if there were other things you wanted to mention there. And, and Counselor, is that helpful?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Um, yeah, I think that covered everything wrong.
And this may be a question for the town manager, but does the money that we, that say EverSource bids, does that go into our general town budget, I'm assuming?
It's really to credit, isn't it? It just reduces waste.
It usually shows up as a credit on your electric bill.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, and just. Oh, and just, I am in favor of all options. I agree with Councillor Westerveld, but I advise that we look at all options.
Thank you. Councillor Bordalung?
Thank you for coming. I did a lot of research on this, and I'm just reading the NRS, NRES on the ever-source website here for the non, for, you know, for non-residential, and looking at the timeframes and things. Some things are still a little bit unclear. I kind of had hoped, or I wish, and we got a one-page synopsis here. It'd be great if the town manager could send the slideshow that you presented, because it's great to have that stuff beforehand reviewed. So what I saw up there, looks good, but I haven't been able to really dig into it, right? I'm a big sustainability and resource person as far as making sure climate action is, but I'm also about good governance and good contracts. So I just want to make sure. So as of right now, we are, as to the town manager, my first question, we're already paying, right, something because we hired this group to do the research, is that correct? I'm sorry?
No, they're actually, their fee will come out of the developer's cost, I guess. So, yeah, we're not paying them.
Not paying us right now? And what if it didn't go through, then what happens? What if no one, you get nothing? Okay. All right, I'm just, I mean, this is questions the community's asking me. So I have to ask the hard questions, right? Where does it start, where does that? Because I don't see, I see what it is, but I don't understand our stake in all of this and how this propels from, what is our, our stake is money? If the company that we hire goes bankrupt, what happens? What protections will be when we start looking at the RFP? I want to make sure there's protections in there, because as I'm doing research, I've seen things go, companies jump onto this bandwagon to, new company jumps in and says, "Oh, great, there's money in this, I want to create a company, I want to build a solar panel." They jump on, two bidding people working together have a fallout, happens everywhere, right? And they can't work together anymore, and then there's a bankruptcy. What's going to be in there to protect us, as it happens?
Excellent question. That is, part of our RFP process includes an analysis of the financial stability, the experience of the bidders, the, their track record in the market. We tend to, for this, particularly this size project on a landfill, is not something that a small operation usually can handle. This is the type of operation where we've seen, typically seen national or international companies bidding on this size and shape of project. But even those companies do occasionally go bankrupt or they get merged. That gets billed into the contract. There are often, these projects on the developer's end are financed, and there are always provisions in the contract to ensure that, that sort of financier usually steps into the position of the developer or a developer, to the extent they do go bankrupt, is replaced by a developer of our approval and choosing. So again, to the extent those things do, I'm a lawyer, so these do happen, you have to plan for those contingencies. They're baked into that agreement with the developer.
Right, and what if the, and stuff, so these are the agreements when we get into the detailed RFP that we need to make sure are in there? Or if a working relationship was to break down, what is our plan, you know, if it's a 20-year agreement? But I, can you direct me towards some, because I like to do my research here, one that's up and running or has started to that we can research and look at?
Sam, an operating, so a landfill in particular?
Correct. It doesn't have to be in our state even, it could be some other type of thing that was implemented. Because for me, it's good to see, like, I'm agreeing to something tonight that I know nothing about, that I've not seen. So can you show me where this has been working in a good relationship and it's been up and running?
Derby is...
Yeah, Derby has one. There's one in Derby, Connecticut, like Hartford.
Hartford's had a small array on their landfill now for six years, maybe more, or seven. They're expanding theirs. I'm trying to think of a good field trip one, if you wanted to go. Wallingford has one, a large one on their, on their former landfill.
Oh, North Haven, right off of 91.
Right, so these are, these are things when I'm making a decision that I'd like to see. So if those, if you could send me a list of all of that as well, would be very helpful to have. Tonight, I, I'm going to probably move forward with this because I agree, because I want to look at ways, but my decision when we get down to the RFP could change depending on how the RFP is written, as well as what I discover, because I didn't have the information before me tonight. So I'd like that slideshow. I'd like to know more about these, you know, you're selling me a package, right? I got to take a bite. So sell me, lead me to the, lead me to the water. Get me to where I need to go to find a good working system that's working. So I will do my research from what you said, but I hope to get more of this in writing, maybe from the town manager or whoever, if you guys through the town manager. But I think it is important, it's, it's not just this wonderful idea, it's how is it going to be rolled out? And seeing that. Are these places that you named also ever-source facilities?
A mix. Some are UIs, territories.
I'll use my second time, because we time everything here. So there's a lot of moving parts. It's the developer, who comes on board, what the RFP looks like, as well as our relationship and our contract with the RFP with ever-source has to be sound. But I'll continue on my next one, thank you.
Councillor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question on the 20, the 20 years, so this is a 20-year deal, but I'm assuming, just because our whole country's moving forward with solar in one way or another, that it wouldn't just be taken off this hill off of our landfill. It would, would just something new be put there? I mean, it isn't just 20 years and then it's like packed up and that's it, see ya.
So that is a really good question. And there are, and again, this is, you know, looking into the future 20 years, yes, we will still be using solar energy. It's still a good site for doing that. You would have already done a lot of the upgrades to the wires and the connection sort of system. So the likelihood is in 20 years, now panel, the solar panels themselves may have gone leaps and bounds sort of better, bigger...
Completely changed.
Completely changed. So a repowering, we're sort of, in California, other places that were early sort of adopters are now repowering some former sites. So that is, would clearly be an option, because you'll have some of the key systems already in place. But 20 years from now, I'm not sure what the state incentives, the federal incentives, what, all those sorts of things would be unknown. But I think you're, you're on the right track to say it would likely, you know, find a new opportunity when this, these panels have, you know, served their useful life.
It may be a replacement, or it may just be slotting new panels or something, or whatever the technology is at that, at that point.
Right, potentially, or even extending the existing system for the five-year increment or something.
It's the, the NRES, what happens if we don't win in the NRES? Do we build this project?
No. So the NRES is the key, large financial incentive that makes the project happen.
So I know, I think we have talked about solar power at different places on buildings and things. Is there any way that the town would build their own solar array, or is it just past our capabilities?
Well, you wouldn't, potentially you wouldn't have the trans, it couldn't be done without this.
Okay.
There's other opportunities for the buildings themselves.
This is sort of a golden opportunity that the state has made available that we should, we should jump on board and take this. Otherwise, we're not, we don't have the financial resources to build our own and do something like this. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So, so how far do we go down the path before we find that out? I mean, we're not starting to build anything before we find out that we have the NRES.
So your first step is the RFP to offer the opportunity to the marketplace to find the dance partner. The second step would be that selection and getting that contractual relationship, because they need that, you know, demonstration that they have what's called site control, so they have a right to do that development on your property in order to bid into that. We're aiming for the February, March 2024 NRES auction. They usually take two months to make their decision on that, so we'll have an answer. Did you get in or out of that incentive? And then if you're in, terrific, you're off to all...
Up to the races and away you go. And if you're not...
Race is probably, marathon is probably what I would sort of think about it, because of, you know, permitting the sort of process. But a goal of, you know, in 18 months or so, you're hopefully generating power. But if you don't win in March, you have the opportunity to bid again in the August/September window. And again, that'll be a discussion of what, how close were you in the first auction, which you don't, they don't actually reveal how close you were, but you can get sort of intelligence.
Part of your job as a consultant is to position the town in the best light to get this, to get these credits.
And that delicate balance of, again, we want to ensure the town, you know, receives as high a financial benefit, but you don't get anything if you're not a winner, in the winner's circle for that NRES program.
And is this sort of end at the end of this next 2024? Or is it sort of, will there be more biddings going on?
Great question. It is year three of a six-year program, so 2024 is the third year.
So there are opportunities if we don't make it, as they see how it rolls out with other towns across the state, they can go, okay, we need, they may change their incentives or something and bring more towns in.
And that, again, we also track the legislature to see what they're doing. Again, there's that 100 megawatts per year in this current program. Sometimes the legislature in its wisdom decides now that 100 should be more. That, again, those, you know, we do track that every year.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'm in favor of the widest one. Go for everything that you can.
Thank you. Councillor Jakun?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I just had one question. Was it for the liability, both for the commercial and then if we were to lease the power to the towns, would that still be considered with the developer?
Yeah, so that's, again, correct. So the developer is the one that is completely in charge of and sort of owns the solar arrays themselves. They're basically, you're allowing them as the town to place them for 20 years on your landfill. It's, part of our interesting opportunity in this RFP is to figure out that right mechanism for, okay, how would you get a Stonington, a, you know, Norwich is on Norwich Public Utilities, so they, not a Norwich, but Hartford. Anyone in ever-source territory could be a participant in your, in your landfill. And through that process of the RFP, we'll sort of figure out the right way to compensate Groton for being the host of that, those extra kilowatt-hours.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm in favor of looking at all the options. Thank you.
Councillor McBride?
Yes, thank you very much for the presentation. It seems very interesting. I, along with the numerous other councillors, am in favor of looking at all the various options of the virtual that meter program. I just had a couple of quick questions. The timing, I think you alluded to 18 months, is that, so if you assume two years, do you think credits will be, we're in fiscal '24 now, but should we be looking at our budget like fiscal '26 when we'd actually see dollars, credits coming back in?
That would probably be the soonest.
So two years, okay. And what about estimates on any dollar amounts that you have? I mean, is it 500,000, is it a million and a half? Or what are these, do we have any idea of what those are at current, at the current rate structures that are being auctioned off?
So we hesitate to give those types of numbers at this point. I mean, that's part of the reason we're putting the RFP out, is to see what the bidders will offer. And they usually offer a wide range of benefit to the town. So we hesitate.
Okay, that's true.
So we don't want to say a number that is off by 50%.
Okay, and then one other question. Maybe this is for town manager Bert. I don't see any schools in here. Do we consider the schools as offsetting some of their electricity? Because they're typically the largest producers of electricity, aren't they?
Well, they're not a municipality, so I assume that they could participate in purchasing it from us, is that right?
Schools, schools would count, but you need to, though, make sure that they are the schools within ever-source territory.
But if Groton has schools in the ever-source district, which I believe we do...
Middle schools and ever-sources, right?
No, middle school is, that's Groton Utilities, but, no, it's ever-sourced, I'm sorry. But they, the middle school and Mystic River Magnet School are working through the Green Bank to put solar panels on their, on the site themselves, but if, you know, if there's still, I guess...
Excess.
Excess, we could, yeah, that. And we have Northeast Academy and the admin building.
Okay, so those we could add in there.
Those are ever-source, so they could be included.
And there's flexibility for up to 1,000 municipal accounts to be appointed to, so...
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Franco?
Thank you. So I have solar at my home, and I also, and participate where I do not own them and I do not lease them. The company owns them and they have them on my house. So, so typically, what is our out-of-pocket cost on this?
So, zero.
Zero?
Yeah.
Okay. And they take care of everything, from the permits to everything? Is that correct? They take care of permitting and making sure that they can get everything out there, they, whatever?
Yeah, all of the development costs, permitting, the engineering designs, any upgrades to the infrastructure for the ever-source to get, you know, the proper circuits and substation upgrades, anything like that that's required, would be the responsibility of the developer. Then additionally, throughout the life of the solar array, there would be the responsibility of the developer to handle any maintenance, including landscaping. And then if anything breaks, they're responsible for fixing it.
And part of our RFP process is actually to have each of the bidders sort of itemize all those different sort of elements of their costs, so we can compare bidder A to bidder B on how much they're anticipating in those interconnection costs. How much they're anticipating the panels will cost? How much they're anticipating the site work will cost? And that is part of our evaluation to also check and see if their numbers make sense and, you know, are they reasonable?
Okay, and the state also had a program that I joined when I got solar, and it was zero out-of-pocket as well, and they took care of everything. I have saved substantial amount of money, and I have been going on many, many, many years now, and I've been very happy with it. So we're talking about the town buildings, and does this, and let me, just correct me if I'm wrong, can we do all the street lighting as well on ever-source portions of town?
Yes, we can. We have looked at some of the streetlight bills, accounts, in sizing the system.
And then, so if we produce more than we use, so where do those, so the kilowatts stay in an account? Because there's certain months that you're going to use higher levels, maybe in the summer than you may in the winter. So it fluctuates, I understand how that works. And usually you have all these credits, but then you dwelm them down in the higher months, in your peak months. And so at the end of the year, if you have additional kilowatt-hours sitting in there, what do you, what happens to those?
Leave those, I think it is similar to what you experienced residentially, which I do as well. There is, in the initial sizing of the system, as Sam says, you had to demonstrate that you had beneficial accounts that matched the output of the solar array that you're sizing. Now, in a given year, the sun shines 2% more than it would have otherwise. Those actually then do accrue to you, and I think there's like a true-up at the end of the year, or, you know, one of the, that you will then get, you'll get paid for every kilowatt-hour it actually produces.
It'll come back as maybe a rebate or a refund of some sort, or could you roll it over to the next year of some sort? Okay, and then, and then at the transfer station, they're calling it now, there should be no issues at all with like, because there's methane and whatever's coming out of the property there. There's no...
They put these on these capped landfills all the time. They'll have, because we have access roads, you know, we have to get to the wellheads and stuff, so they'll design the solar array so that we still have access to that for maintenance. But as Sam said, that, you know, they're responsible now for all the grass cutting and stuff within the solar field. So we wouldn't have to do that anymore for a good chunk of the landfill.
All right, and then, so then you have your 20-year contracts, and if we go forward in the RFP, it depends on which developer you get, what the contracts are going to say, is that correct? So are they, are they typically all the same kind of contract? Or are some varying?
It's a great question. There, there are some, there often are similar provisions, particularly because most solar developers usually have financing partners and they have some elements that are the same. But it's a contract with the town of Groton, so I work with the town and the town's other legal council to ensure that they're meeting all of your town requirements in terms of purchasing rules, in terms of indemnity clauses, all those sorts of things that we make sure fits exactly what the town has in its standard contracting language as well.
Okay, well, I am absolutely in favor of this. I've experienced solar myself, so I know what it's like, and I know how much I save per year. So I, this would be great for the town, and I would look forward to going forward with whichever option and seeing the cost benefits and looking at the contracts that might come in. And I appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Bordalung?
Thank you. Again, my questions are just looking at the protection of the town, not the project itself. I did do some searching here based on some of the towns that you had given. Obviously, I wasn't able to read in great detail, but it'd be great, you know, I'll do some more research. do some more research. But looking at the bill from the state, which also I think would be great, John, if you could send that to us, to the actual bill that protects this governing entity that allows us to do such, would be great to add it to our packet as well. There, because when I did search it, I pulled up two different ones, and because it was revised several times in its beginning phases, so I just want to make sure I'm reading the right one, so if that could be given to us as well. What I also did read on there, if I'm reading it correctly, it does state that it can be on brownfields. So it doesn't have to be a landfill to get some of these, these financial benefits. It could be on a designated brownfield that maybe in a town may never be remediated for whatever reason. Is that true?
It is, so I think, Counselor, great question. You're referring to this twenty percent sort of bonus incentive that's really a state policy to encourage solar on landfills and brownfields. And the brownfield list is kept by the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection of brownfield sites, but, so I'm, the, and, yeah, so, yes, so that could be another type of site. Now, they sort of use them kind of interchangeably, because in some ways a landfill is kind of also a brownfield. But yes, that is another opportunity. I'm not sure the town has a brownfield site of their own.
We've identified some, I don't know if they're large scale, but there are some. There's one right here on Route One. But the thing is, where the old gas station used to be, it's partial, still not unremediated. I guess what my question is, is it seems as if the way that I was reading it from the state the other night was that basically you could do the landfill, but towns could do secondary spots on brownfields that are smaller supplement stations if needed.
Yeah, no, and it's a great question. And the, one of the challenges for a developer is, or I'll flip it to, an opportunity for a developer, a five-megawatt large array site, you get economies of scale. You get to mobilize once at one location and have your crew there efficiently sort of deploying large amounts of panels at one time. The challenge you get with smaller scattered sort of sites is that it's often a more challenging sort of construction. There'll then also be the question, would you want them on the ground? Or would you, if you want them up in the air, in a canopy, which is, you sometimes see in parking lots, it's a lot of steel, and so you're building like a building without walls, but those add to the expense of them. I'd also, Counselor, just what popped in my head, also, your, part of our RFP requirement to the bidders is to provide at least three examples of prior projects. We usually have them provide examples of three landfill projects that they had done. So again, ensuring that we have developers who know how to work on landfills. So that'll be in their package that they're submitting to us for evaluation as well. So that will also get you hopefully some sort of comfort on the, you know, their past performances on other, for each individual bidder. But Sam, you wanted to?
Yeah, yeah, so if you're looking at different locations, each of those would be an individual project, so you would have to go through the auction process. And there are specific, like fixed costs associated with each, with individual systems, including like the design, engineering, interconnection costs. So if you can do one larger centralized project, it ends up being more the best, getting the best financial benefit that way.
My other question is, are you the only, do you work with a team yourself as an attorney? Are there a team of you that are going around? Or are there multiple attorneys that are taking part of this, this state benefit?
No, so I'm, Clean Sustainability Advisors is my single-member LLC. I also happen to be a lecturer at the Yale School of the Environment, and I'm also the former commissioner of the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. I bring the legal side. CSW Energy is a larger organization, solar developers themselves, but they provide the technical and sort of financial analysis.
So who selects the legal side for each town? How does, I mean, I'm just trying to see how it starts and how it rolls out here. Are there multiple attorneys represented? So who did Wallingford, was that you, or?
No.
No, okay, so it's multiple different, so there's not just one umbrella of, so there's multiple that are rolling?
Multiple firms that probably provide this type of service, I'm sure.
Okay, so multiple firms. All right, again, I'm going to support this. I think whatever comes back, I mean, obviously, it doesn't lock us in. I think the meat and potatoes are going to be the RFP. I'm excited to see what that states. I think it's very important that all the lines are delineated properly. I am going to be doing my research, looking at Wallingford, looking at other RFPs, and also looking to see where maybe, you know, because there's some towns that did this first, I'm sure there's some things they wish they had added. So that's really important to make sure. But for now, I think throwing it out there, doing the research, coming back, seeing what comes to us, is all great. I mean, any, any chance to get off of fossil fuels, I'm in full support. I'm just hoping that we have a strong enough RFP for protection. As I had stated, what happens if there is a bankruptcy? What happens if an attorney backs out? How do we then build this working team? Because there's multiple hands in it, and it only will be smooth if everyone's working together. So that's my concern. How do we move forward with that? But I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent questions.
Thank you.
Okay, we seem to have a consensus from the council, put out the RFP, interest in all options, just to see what comes back. Good?
Thank you all for your questions. Terrific.
Manager Burt, do you have Counselor Parker online?
No, she does not.
Okay. So we'll note, sure, we'll note that Counselor Parker left, I believe, around seven fifteen, and the council will stand in recess at seven forty-four.
And Council Parker has joined. Onto Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. We have Director Reiner for some background.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to talk a little bit about the Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant. I think Megan's going to be the lead on this one.
Sure. Good evening. Hi, everyone. Megan Granato, Sustainability and Resilience Manager. So I'll give a little context about the grant program and then I'll explain to you the approach that we are suggesting that the town move forward with. So this program with a very long name, Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant, EECBG for short, is actually something that's existed for a number of years. It's a federal program administered by the Department of Energy, or DOE, and the town actually got money back in 2013 through this program. We did an energy action strategy and some upgrades at the library for the lighting. What's happened in the last two years is that through the passing of the bipartisan infrastructure law, the program got a huge surplus of money, an additional $550 million. And so DOE decides to roll out $440 million of that as formula funds to state municipalities. And the whole thing is trying to get folks to do energy efficiency projects, reducing energy use, reducing the use of fossil fuels. And so with the formula funding that they've rolled out, they used some, you know, determination based on the size of municipality and the population, and Grotton is on the list of local governments that have funding earmarked for them. So ours is in the total of $76,460. So to explain a little bit and to make it clear, the funds are, we're not competing for the funds, right? They are allocated to us based on the size of our community. However, we still have to go through a process of applying for the funds, right? We have to show DOE that we have a plan, it's in line with the program that they've built. So that's kind of the stage that we're in right now. And so we went through a process over the last few months of trying to understand the bounds of that program and then working with Director Hanover to figure out some good options of how we thought the funds could be used. The option that we would like to recommend we move forward with is doing some upgrades to our municipal fleets. So one of the things that the program allows is funding to be spent on what they call the conservation of transportation fuel, so essentially replacing traditional gas-powered vehicles with electric alternatives, and then also the charging infrastructure that you need to be able to fuel those electric vehicles. The town has had an electric vehicle since 2016-ish, a previous grant. It's a Nissan Leaf. We've had it in the planning pool for their use. It's dedicated for the Office of Plane Development Services. And so, you know, Greg Staff, our fleet manager, they've worked with this vehicle for now nine-ish years, right? So we have proof of concept that, you know, having electric vehicles in our fleets works. And the other kind of dynamic going on here is that funding the previous grant that allowed us to purchase that electric vehicle, that's actually the grant that supported the installation of electric vehicle chargers at Town Hall, here at the Annex, and also at the library. What we found over time is those have become very popular, right? So typically, especially the one here at the Annex, I know the library is even busier than ours, people are using those stations. So with this, you know, thinking about potentially phasing more electric vehicles into our fleet, we want to make sure that we have dedicated chargers to be able to support those vehicles. So the package that we're recommending is that we use the $76,460 of the EECBG formula funds for the purchase of two electric vehicles and also the installation of two dual-head electric vehicle chargers. So that would essentially give you four ports that you could be using to charge vehicles at any given time. And the hope there is that, assuming, you know, kind of the asks and risks of all the programs work out, that the chargers would be used specifically for fleet vehicles, so anyone couldn't drive up and use them. We wanted to give you an idea of the total amount of this package in terms of value and cost, and so that is on the second page where we have the bolded number. So we priced out two electric vehicles, likely Chevrolet Bolts, so those are kind of smaller sedans. Those run about $30,000 each. And then we got a rough estimate for the installation of the two dual-head chargers, you know, putting them in, doing all of the electrical work, getting them connected to the cloud, putting in protective bollards so no one accidentally drives into them and knocks them over. And that whole package with the vehicles included gets us to about $92,000, $93,000. So the other program that we're hoping to deploy here to cover the difference is another Eversource rebate program. So I know you just heard all about one. Eversource and UI also have a program right now where they are providing incentive dollars, essentially rebates, for the installation of electric vehicle chargers. So if we were successful in getting the rebate funds through that program, they would cover half of the cost of the chargers themselves and then all of what they call the make-ready costs. That's all the cost to do the installation, the electrical work, really get them up and running. So, you know, if the plan goes as intended between those two sources of funding, the formula funds from EECBG and then the rebate through Eversource, we would have actually a little bit more than enough to cover the entire $93,000 price tag. So at this point, this isn't us coming to you asking for additional money. So a couple of, you know, reasons why we were interested in this route include the fact that our electric, our fleet vehicles, the two that would be replaced, are already about five years past their service, right? So these are vehicles that already are going to have to be phased out, we're going to have to be getting replacements. So this gives us an opportunity to actually use outside funding to do that. I think it's also a really great demonstration value. Our fleet vehicles travel across the town all day, every day, and so them being electric, I think, gives further, you know, testimony to how seriously town is taking climate change and climate resiliency. I'm trying to think if there's anything else we wanted to highlight. Did I miss anything?
No, just that the electricity cost would basically take care of the fuel savings that we'd see from operating EVs versus gas-powered.
And then if we, if the solar on the landfill went through, through the virtual net metering, essentially you'd be running those cars on sunshine.
All right. Thank you. So I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution authorizing development and submittal of the fleet electrification, EECBG proposal, as well as the Connecticut Electric Vehicle Charging Program application. So moves.
Second. Bordelone.
By Melendez, seconded by Bordelone. Council Jacome.
Thank you, Mayor. Megan, just to confirm, so the dual ports, first of all, is there a difference between the Level 1 and Level 2 that we have specifically, the number, the amount of ports chargers on them?
It's actually not the number of ports, it's the amount of electricity. So Level 1 is essentially if you just like plug it into your garage, like a typical outlet. Level 2 charger are the same things that we already have here. They are different, you might have heard of DC Fast chargers. Those are the ones that can charge the car in about half an hour. Those also can cost up to $250,000 in electrical upgrades, addition of transformers, and things of that nature to install. So Level 2 are the basic, I mean, it's got to take a couple hours to charge your car, depending on how much charge it already has, but for the purposes of fleet vehicles, that's kind of perfect, right? Because if we're driving our vehicles during the day, drawing down that battery, we plug them in for night, the next day they're ready to go.
Okay. And then the ideal location it said in here, correct, was the lower Town Hall slash Annex facility, so back here?
Right down here. This is where we have the public works and the planning vehicles all parked, so we have a significant portion of the fleet that are, you know, those vehicles are there every night.
And then my, I guess my other question would be, is it, why don't we consider other vehicles? I know, like, I understand the Chevrolet Bolts are cheaper, but when I think of vehicles that, from what I read, you know, you have the Tesla and you have a Rivian, while they are sometimes overly priced, or from what I've seen, sometimes they're more reliable. Do you, do you have an answer to that?
I really couldn't speak to the reliability. I think we were kind of looking for a bang for the buck, the Chevrolet Bolt being your typical kind of sedan-ish vehicle can cover a lot of needs if we were going to be, you know, and potentially we build this someday, replacing vehicles that are used, you know, for some of our inspection staff, perhaps, or public works staff, or they are trucks, we would have to be looking at different capabilities. But I think at this point, you know, in talking with Director Hanover, there are enough kind of general-purpose used vehicles that need to be replaced that we're good candidates for this.
Yeah, be fair, I agree. And then so currently, right now in the fleet, there's only one electric vehicle?
Correct.
And then, or do you think we have the capability to maintain the vehicles in public works specifically? For, I know some municipalities for electric vehicles, you need a specific certification to maintain those vehicles. Are we prepared to maintain them?
I don't know if I should answer for Greg.
Yes, we're prepared to maintain those.
Yeah, like a straight answer.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, like Megan said, we do have one in our fleet now, and, you know, we're looking to add more, and, you know, we're, the ones that we're replacing are, you know, like 2006, 2005 vintage Escapes SUVs, which, you know, are programmed to be replaced the next year or two anyway. So that's why we, you know, selected these admins. They're perfect, you know, these smaller sedans, EUVs, I think it's called, it's almost like an SUV Bolt, you know, perfect for, you know, the admin for either public works engineering or for planning.
Okay. So that sounds good, like you guys can do it, so that's awesome. And then my other question was, is there a mechanism, you said it's going to be town employee only at the bottom, the new, the new plug, so is there a mechanism to stop the public from coming and using those?
Yeah, and that's why I referenced needing to know the, the fine language of, once we get in, if we were accepted by that Eversource rebate program, they refer to it as you are able to do workplace charging, which I believe is them saying that you could have it designated for fleet, but that's something that we need to clarify with the program. Regardless, there are ways now through those interfaces where we could have RFID cards or something similar assigned to the fleet vehicle, where you pull up the fleet vehicle, you know, use the FOB, and you're able to use the system. Some places are doing that, where they have those types of cards for their fleet vehicles, the public can still use them, and the public has to actually, you know, pay and go through a different interface, but it's all managed through just the same charger technology.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm in support of this. I think the benefit of going electric one day is going to be cost benefit for us as a town, and it's the future, so thank you.
Council Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Megan, and Director Reiner. On the activation and operation costs, operating costs, one year cloud service, is that the cost of the chargers or the cost, the cost of electricity?
No, that was kind of a lump sum. I didn't want to give you way too many lines. So that was, you know, it's one year of cloud service, it's a year of warranty, there's certain charges for actually doing the, they call it the pinpointing, the activation protocol, so it's those sorts of things that you need to get the charger up and running. That is not the electricity to actually fuel the charger.
So is that an ongoing yearly cost we'll have to pay for the charger?
It will be, that there will be a yearly cost for the cloud connection, so in order to, to Councilor Jacome's point, you know, all these things have a lot of technology baked in now, so they have to be collected, connected to the cloud, so you can pull data off of them and you can remotely manage them. And then there's also warranty costs that, you know, if the town decided. And I believe some of those you can get a deal if you buy a five-year warranty versus buying it year after year, but those are things we'd have to look into.
So do you, do you have a sense of what that ongoing cost might be, the, and then how are we paying? Because that cost isn't coming out of this grant, of these two grants. Where is that cost going to be coming from for year two, three, and four?
Yep, and I did clarify with DOE, the first year of at least the cloud, I believe also the warranty can come out of the grant, and I was positive it was in here somewhere. Oh, we just said the ongoing cost for the program would be the warranty in cloud service, so we didn't actually have line items for those. I want to say it was between the cloud service and the warranty, if you paid a year-by-year basis, maybe a thousand for each, but I could get you exact numbers.
Do we, do we pay that on the other, one, two, three, four, I don't have, six, how many chargers do we have?
We have three chargers.
Three chargers.
They are not cloud-connected, so they, you literally, you pull up, you press a button, it extends the charger, you plug in, that's that. In terms of warranty, I don't know, did you have warranties on this?
May have, those things are probably, I think, I want to say six or seven years old now. We have a contractor that repairs them, any repairs that need to be made, so there's no warranty.
I also, I noticed there's also some at, like, the Mystic River School, they put in a couple there. Is that coming out of the Board of Ed or is that a town?
That would be out of Board of Ed.
Board of Ed, maybe. Do you know what it, what it costs in electricity a year to, to charge our, the vehicles?
To charge the vehicles? I don't have that number.
So that's another cost that we, that has to come from somewhere.
It is, but I would like to point out that it, it's offset compared to the cost that you'd pay for buying the gas. So tradit, well, when you look at, and I was looking at a calculator just today, you can compare vehicle cost for both how you're fueling it in terms of either gasoline or electricity, and then also maintenance cost. Maintenance costs on electric vehicles tend to be lower, they actually have fewer moving pieces. So between those two cost items, even playing around, looking at buying the new Chevy Bolts versus the 2006, 2008 Escapes we're thinking of replacing, we're saving money annually on, on fueling and maintenance, based on a calculator. Again, that's not real world, but it kind of speaks to the fact that overall, these are typically less expensive to own and operate.
So electric costs are less than the gas and, and maintenance that we have on the current vehicle?
Correct.
And as Megan said, if we get solar up at the landfill, it'll be free.
They'll all be free. All right, thank you.
Council Bordelone.
Oh, thank you. I just think it's great. I mean, I think any opportunity we can to change is important, and you can't really put a cost on health, as Maya always says, long-term, you know, if you're cutting down emissions and you're cutting down on some of those great, you know, the gases and things that are emitting, that's a cost. I thought it was interesting, though, what you said about having the lockability, and we have three other stations, is that, is that what you're saying? So this would add another, this would make a fourth station, or, because what are, I mean, we don't have our other ones locked, is that correct? Those are open all night long, right?
Correct. They can use them any time of the day, seven days a week.
Yeah. So we pay for that, too?
We pay for electricity for those, yes. Yeah, we had to when we got the grant for those, I think it was a three-year period, we had to offer it to the public for free, but that, you know, period is coming on. So we could technically start charging.
Yeah. And then, yeah, because I was just wondering if this one would be open to the public, and you said not, because what's in my notes here, that someone had asked me, is that they see cars parked there all night, and then they go to the library in the morning, and they went to pump theirs, and the same car was there last night. So I don't know when, that, that'll be another thing we can talk about another, but if this one's starting, it makes sense to, what we install now have the ability to lock off and close at certain hours, so I'm not sure if the other ones that we have have that ability, but we can talk about that. But, because I don't think, you know, anyway, all hour, you know, but this is a great option. It's something I'm looking at myself when I get my next vehicle, but first looking at the component of the plug system at my own home, I have to get that upgraded first, so it is smart, and it, I think we're looking, big picture, which I always like, is we're looking at the CIPs, you know, I like to see that we're looking ahead, okay, these are cars that are going to be, need to be replaced, here's some grant money that's going to make that number go down, so I appreciate that. So that, that's also looking at the taxpayer under the big umbrella, but also looking at the health benefits and qualities of the town. So is there any reason we, and I know you had answered that, I had that in my notes, is any reason we went with the Bolt? Is there some type of rebate with them right now that's making that particular kind of low-impact car, or is there a possibility we may look at other, you know, size vehicles besides the Bolt if there's a better deal?
I think we can look at it. I think most of the other electric vehicles available tend to be pricier. So again, for that purpose, like you just spoke to, of trying to alleviate funds that would otherwise come through as a CIP, through the opportunity of this grant funding and trying to stretch those dollars a bit further, that was what lent us. I mean, some of the vehicles mock ease, for example, I mean, significantly more money. So then we would maybe be able to buy one vehicle and put in one charger. So we were really trying to kind of get as much done as possible with the funds at hand.
Yeah. No, thank you. I, I mean, I know from my own research, it, it could be that these are the cheapest, but I wouldn't discredit some other things that have some of the rebates right now. You know, it's funny, you know, when looking at colleges for my own son right now, he's like, well, you said look at in-state, but sometimes the out-of-state school's giving more money, so then the cost benefit changes. So maybe there's a car that's got a really hefty rebate right now, maybe Toyota, I don't know, I'm throwing a random name out there, that might put us in the same running, but it might be a better quality car. So I just hope that we might not lose out on any of those other opportunities, just to see if there's any rebates from the direct manufacturer right now. So just a thought. Well, thank you. But good luck.
Council Franco.
Thank you. So I have heard from people, and I don't know if it's true, because I do not have an electric car, but replacing batteries, if there's a problem with the batteries in the electric car, can be extremely expensive. So we've taken those factors into consideration.
Yeah, I was reading something about that just earlier today, that I think to get over some of the fact that this is still, it's not new technology anymore, but it's still newer, and there's still a learning curve in people becoming comfortable in driving these vehicles. A lot of the factory rebates and warranties on electric vehicles are more substantial than you would get on a traditional gas-powered vehicle for that reason. So I'm not sure how it factors into, like, the calculator I was looking at today, but I know that the industry at large is looking at that kind of trepidation, and in order to get people comfortable driving these vehicles, they're using some other, you know, avenues through maybe a better warranty to try to help people feel comfortable.
Okay. Thank you for answering that, because I don't know much about them, but I guess you're looking into that and watching it. So I would like to thank you for bringing this forward, because as I write in here, there is no cost sharing or matching required. You've checked this with our existing capital improvement projects, the funding to install these, the two vehicles, the charging stations, and that, basically replacing vehicles, which is basically saving taxpayer dollars in our community for future town budgets. And I did see also that there will probably be a small amount that we will have to pay yearly to maintain this charging station. But all in all, I would like to say thank you. to maintain this charging station. But all in all, I would like to say thank you so much for bringing this forward. And I do recall that when we were deciding your position, it was told, and it was a selling point, that you would bring forward grants. And it would be well worth, you know, the weight in gold to have you to bring forward these type of grants. And I thank you, and you have proven, you're proven that today, and I appreciate that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel Borlone?
Just an other side note, because I, when I was looking at cost of, you know, your traditional, these are gonna be full-electric, not hybrid, correct?
Correct.
To Counselor Franco's point about the batteries, that's another thing that some people had brought up. One of the ways that I was researching and found answers to that was, to my understanding, I guess it's Greg Hanover, is you don't have the oil changes every.
Correct.
So, that, that's where you get your savings. I mean, depending on how much you drive, you're, you're paying, some people are doing one a month, depending on how much they drive. So, you're not having to pay that extra hundred, a hundred dollars a month for an oil change or depending on what you put in your car. So, that offsets that cost, that battery in the next five years if you had to replace it or something like that. Is, is that what you're finding? Or just the maintenance overall, because you're not using the traditional ways of maintaining?
Yeah. We haven't had to replace the battery in the Nissan Leaf that we've had. So, I don't know what the cost is of that. But you're right. I mean, the, the maintenance cost is substantially reduced on electric vehicles.
And with us doing the labor ourselves, not a lot of it, there's that savings, too.
Right. Yeah, no. So, that's great. So, that, that does play a huge factor. You're not doing that, that routine. So, you know, again, it, to me, it's a no-brainer. It's a grant. And I, I'm glad and happy to see this. And just again, as I stated, it helps look at ways of decreasing funding down the road that's needed to purchase vehicles. Is there a chance that this could come in any higher? Are we, are we sure this is a number?
This is the number. They use a formula based on population size and other factors, and based on our demographics, this is the number.
Right. Alright. And is there any other extensions to this possibly coming up? Have they said anything else about this? I did some reading on this grant, and they, they're kind of left it open-ended. It didn't say it was gonna end.
I think the big push they've made is trying to take that $400, $500 million and push it out through one real big effort. So, I don't, you know, traditional grant programs, there's an annual solicitation. That's not how they've structured this. Essentially, this is your funding allocation. You have until this date to make the application, and then you have a certain amount of time to spend it. If not, said that they are repeating that process. I have no doubt it will likely go back to the smaller, scaled-down version of the grant program that's existed for years. I think those was kind of a once-in-a-generation, you know, that influx to the bipartisan infrastructure law made all the difference with this.
Alright. Is this something our subdivisions could be taking advantage of as a partnership?
What, how, how do you mean?
Like, like looking at the city, looking at GLP, looking at any of our subdivision municipalities?
They're not eligible on their own. It'd be a council decision to, to take away funds from our use.
So, what I'm saying, when we're looking at this, we have a way to include them into this in the future. They're not including this now?
Well, this is a one-time thing, likely again, so.
No, what I was asking, on the front end, we did not include them. Is that correct?
No, it's not much money to try to, you know, there's not enough money to do projects in different municipalities.
No, I didn't know if that changed our, our sizing based on, you know, were those factors, or that doesn't change anything?
No, it's based on the town, the town being the municipality.
So, it's not including the city numbers at all, or?
The city is part of the town.
So, they are coding?
Yes.
Alright, perfect. That's what I wanted. Thank you.
I'll just add real quick. I know this because I was recently shopping for an EV. But the Chevy recently discontinued the Chevy Bolt. And by far, the Chevy Bolt was by far the most affordable EV. But they are replacing it with, I believe, an Equinox EV. It's in the same price range, and it has a little more range. So, I'm, I'm sure you can find Chevy Bolts for the next year, brand new. But just keep her out for the Equinox EV. But those two are easily gonna be the most affordable EVs on, on the market for the, you know, next couple of years, for sure. So, is there any more comments, discussion? No? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions. Karys Enamacy, nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstained.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto the Sutton Park renovation investment. Director Barry is here for some background, and you also have a packet in front of you for some extra info.
Good evening. Mark Barry, Director of Parks and Recreation. Next to me is Chad Frost from Kent Frost. At the council's request, we've provided additional information. Hopefully, this helps make the decision this evening a little bit easier. And Town Manager Bert also put together a packet of information with some different options. And I don't know where the council would prefer to begin this evening. We can perhaps go over the colored conceptual plan, just so that there's an understanding of the different sections, and then welcome any questions or discussion.
And I did just pull up the, if you just want to go over the basic.
Good evening, everyone. Great to be back. So, what we tried to do between all the information we gave you in the packet is that the color-coded plan that's up there, we gave you the detailed breakdown, which is a multi-page breakdown of all of the components, and they subtotal onto that first page. That first page, both the numbers correlate to the numbers that are on the plan, right? So, for the most part, what I can say that on the plan, most of the stuff that is uncolored, so around the center of the park, the sidewalk, the curbing and things like that, that's what we're calling number one. We're calling that the base bid. And in the cost estimate, that's coming in at that $665,000. That includes the, the site prep, erosion control, earthwork, walls, hardscape, the curbing, some concrete through there, site furnishings, plantings, and things like that. So, what we're calling kind of the base bid. The number two item is the fitness stations. There's one on this plan. It's down there in that lower left-hand corner. It's the number two. There's one on this, but we were proposing multiples kind of throughout the park, the neighborhood, and over to aquatic plain, which is what totaled up that cost of $62,000. Number three on here, which is in the, it's hard to see up there, but it's the, yep, perfect, the grill stations. The grill stations came in at $32,000. That's obviously the grill, picnic tables, some curbing, some pavement underneath of them, and things like that. Number four is the basketball court, the additional basketball court, along with the walkway and the shade structure and the lighting that go along with it. That was $260,000. Cost item, item five is the parking lot paving, so the repaving. What we're, we're calling in the base bid is all the new curbing. So, new curbing that surrounds the parking. But the paving itself, the mill and repave is something that we could do later or have public works do at a later time. And that cost is $153,000. Number eight on our list, well, I'll keep going down the list. Number six is public art, which was $36,000, and not really shown on the plan. Number seven is site furnishings at $45,000. Number eight, which does show up on the plan, is the stone wall along the front, along the road frontage. It's the entry wall and sign, and that came in at $61,000. Cost item nine is, is the shade trees. So, $90,000 of shade trees. We have about 50 trees on this plan, believe it or not, that are new trees. Cost item 10 is the, the big area right in the middle next to it. Yep, the play, that's the playscape, all the sidewalks and hardscape and lighting and plantings that go along with that playscape. We gave you a little bit of breakdown on that summary sheet. Playscape itself is $300,000. The rubber surfacing is $154,000. Site work is 58, and site amenities is another 140. So, that whole area comes in at about $657. Cost area 11, which is right next to it, is the seating area, which is about $82,000 by the time you factor in the amenities and the pavement. Cost area 12 is the skatepark pavilion structures. So, we have multiple structures that we've talked about around the perimeter of the skatepark. That comes in at $259,000. Skatepark lighting, we have had to add some additional lights. There were, originally, we were proposed, or we thought we only needed three. Now, with the new expanded park, we need five. So, that is now $176,000. And then, the skatepark phases. So, that's where you see most of the color on your plan. We broke it down into letters there. So, we have A through I, kind of component areas. They do go counterclockwise. So, in that right-hand corner where A is, A, B, and C are the, what I'll say is the most important items of the skatepark as far as near-term construction. They provide a lot of the amenities that the skateboarders were looking for, and they provide for that interface between, I'll say, the park, the sidewalk, and all the things that happen in the park, as well as the connection into the skatepark. So, those are highly important areas. Then, we have area D, which is down there, that kind of the entry of the, the skatepark. Working up the side now between the playscape and the skatepark is area E. And then, F and G. And what I will tell you about F and G is, F can be separate. It's kind of a, an area that stands alone within the skatepark. So, if there's a way to break that phase off, it's a pretty easy thing to be able to, to separate. G is an area within the existing park that needs some work. There's some drains in there that need to be fixed. We continue around counterclockwise. H is just a large sloping asphalt area. Again, not a high priority. And then, I is the bowl area. There's an existing bowl that needs to have some repair done to it. So, again, from a skater perspective, almost just the, that counterclockwise, the way we've labeled them, is almost the order of importance. We have, as, as was in some of the options before you, the ability to pull out F, H, and G and I to some degree, too, has not as high of an importance from the skatepark, from the immediate need. Question?
There's one number missing on here.
There's a number missing on where?
The ledge.
There's lots of numbers missing on the legend. If you're looking at the, the map here.
Yeah, where's nine, then?
So, so nine is the shade trees, right? So, I didn't put a number nine on the plan because the shade trees, we have 50 shade trees on here. So, that number doesn't show up. So, the legend, if you're looking at the legend on the plan, it only has the numbers for things that correlate to a, a location, right? So, the basketball court's on there, the fitness station's on there. But like, the public art is not on there, number six, because we don't have just a single spot to call that out. So, we tried to make the areas as identifiable as possible, and then label those, and have the numbers match up with the numbers in the cost estimate, which I understand, we didn't want to have one through 10 on the plan and one through 15 on the cost estimate. So, that's why there's some skip numbers in the plan. So, we tried to give you all the information that we have, and almost make it a menu of opportunities of, of what you could pick. And then, we have, as Mark mentioned, we have the four options in front of you that have kind of all been broken down with what you could include, given various amounts of additional funding. What I would, I'll just offer a little bit more. As we've talked about through this process, this is the master plan, right? We worked with the public to come up with what does the public want for this park. We've been very clear to all of the users, whether it was skatepark or, or playground or general users of site, that what we're trying to do is come up with a long-term vision, and that will likely have to be implemented over time. And that meant everybody kind of wanted to get everything they could out of it. Last time we were here, there was some discussion about we should, you know, can we fund everything of this one thing, or everything of this other thing? What we've tried to do is figure out a way to spread that investment as much as possible, because I don't think any one particular user group expected to get 100% of everything they asked for in the long term right away. And I'll use a skatepark as an example, that it has grown in almost every direction from when we began. And they kind of put the wish lists out there, like that bowl, the letter F, would be a great thing to have. They'd love to have it. But it's not an immediate thing that they need to have fixed right away, right? So, there was, we've, we've put all the hopes and dreams for that park there. But there are ways to kind of phase in and over time. And on some level, some of the skaters would almost appreciate being able to continue to do a couple of pieces in the future, so they don't feel locked in right now that the park is now built and done and finished, right? Because they like to be able to continue to evolve it. So, that's why we tried to help give you some direction as to what's most important, both from a park perspective, as, as also what we've heard from the skater perspective as well.
And then, if you're looking at your, at your handout that I provided, I've got the, the, if you go to that first spreadsheet in the packet, which I have up on the screen, which is page two of that little handout, on the left-hand side, and, and just, you know, kind of where I'm coming at, you could do any combination of options on this. You know, these are just some, a few things that made sense to me, starting points to consider. I focused on, after the conversations last month, I really focused on the skatepark. The base bid basically needs to be done. That's something that, if you're gonna go forward, that's something that's gonna be done.
The what? I didn't hear you.
The base bid part is something we're gonna have to do. So, that, that's gonna be included, number one. The rest of it, it's all, my options are focused on the skatepark and the playground area. The rest of it, I'm assuming we would do in smaller projects later through CIPs, or easily tack, tackleable, tackleable later. So, if you're looking under available funds, this is sort of what I had went over last time, except for now taking out that $400,000 that did get improved, did, did get approved for the, for the CIPs, and that $40,500 for Grotton sales. So, once you take those out, we have 1.759 million under capital projects. I'd like to keep $200,000 back for the police locker. I, we had talked about the $500,000 retainage under, in there. I'm not as concerned about that at this point, though. So, we could have another $500,000 to play with, and I'll go into that in a second. We have LoSAP dollars, $135,000 available for the project. And then, as a reminder, already allocated remaining, we have $946,000 already approved out of that original, what was it, $1,050,000? Is that what it was originally?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, if you wanted to rekeep, if you wanted to keep $200,000 back for the police locker room, $500,000 retainage, which again, I'm not as adamant about, but if you did want to, available is $2.14-ish million. Those two numbers actually below that were supposed to be wiped out. There, just me running some calcs. Now, a couple other things to think about, ARPA funds. I did talk with the Grotton Housing Authority about their $690,000, I think it was. They do have a use for that. They have some sewer, emergency sewer works. They are planning on using, utilizing those funds. They'll still have to come to us to say, if you remember, we didn't officially allocate, we just set it aside. So, we'll have to go through that process if the council wants to. The C-Wall, which was originally estimated $2.8 million in the city, the town had set aside 1.4 million of that, thinking we'd put it halfway now and then see where that comes out. Well, they, after that, subsequently received $2.7 million from the state, which would pay for most of that estimated cost. Of course, we know how estimated costs are. And I'm not anticipating it's gonna actually only be $2.8 million. They, I talked to Bear Hedrick. He said they're getting ready to go out to bid. They should have the bids in in January. So, in January, we should know if there's any ARPA funds available. My thinking is, we, as we move forward, we could do some alternate bid options on what we do, so that we can, by the time we get our bids out, we could see if we have those ARPA dollars available to do those pieces. So, that's kind of some of my thinking into this. And I asked Dave Morrison, the finance director, just to kind of update where we're at in terms of 20% fund balance. Because we were looking at using funds through this year as part of our budget. We'd be down to about 19%. We're actually better off than I thought. I'm not advocating using those funds, but just so you'd know, we, if we used 1.8 million and change of it, we'd still be at 20% from what we're anticipating at this point at the end of the year. So, there, but I, I'm not endorsing that. But this makes me feel a little bit better about if we use some of the capital. But this makes me feel a little bit better about if we use some of the capital projects funds, you know, that there is some extra there. On the right, these are what I'm really looking at in these options. The base bid package, one, each component of the skate park, the skate park lighting, the playground, and the playground seating. Those are what I'm focusing on. And I probably should have put, I put a priority on these, but I probably should have put skate park lighting at a high rather than a medium. But if you did all those pieces, it would be 3.1 million and change. If you took the 2.14 million available, plus if we wanted another 500,000 for capital projects, that means we're about 500,000 short, if that was your interest, or a million, if you didn't want to use that 500,000. So going on to option A, this is essentially not, just allocating enough to get the base bid package done, and skate park pieces, the highest priorities, A through C.
Can you blow it up?
Oh. Okay, so looking at this, this would just be, if you look on the right-hand side, base bid package, that's 665,466, and the three highest priority items that Chad mentioned for A, B, and C on the skate park. That would not include the lighting, however, though, but I'm just giving you a simple, not much extra cost option. That total would be a little under 1.1 million. So if you look on the left under available funds, you have the existing 946,000 allocated. You have LoSiP 135, and then another 10,000, 466 out of capital projects would fund this. So just kind of a low cost, not much extra cost, you know, kind of just doing the basic, the basic minimum, if you didn't want to spend much money. Moving on to option B, a couple of pages later. Moving on to that, in this version, we would be looking at the base bid package, the skate park sections, A, B, C, D, E, basically everything but F. F is that bowl that he mentioned, that could be, that could be a part of an alternate bid. So it would do all the skate park except for F, it would do the base bid package, and it would do the lighting, for a total of 2,044,000 to do that part. And then F, the playground, playground seating, we could do as an alternate bid and see how we are in ARPA dollars at that point. So that's an option. But in terms of the 2,044,000, if you take the 946,000 existing funds, the 135,000 LoSiP funds, and then you would need to take 963,766 out of capital projects, which we, you know, as a reminder, we have 1.75 million in there right now. So there's plenty of money to do that. And then the alternate bids would be about 1.1 million if you did that. And that might be getting, you know, I'm kind of doubting out of the 1.4 million, we'll get that much back. You know, I think we'll get, I'm hoping for a decent amount, but that'd probably be pushing it. So I'm not confident we would actually have ARPA dollars for those three pieces. Maybe some of it, though. Moving on to option C. Let me make it bigger. Moving on to option C, looking at doing all of the skate park, including the lighting, so every component of it, A through Y, the skate park lighting and the base bid package, that's 2.4 million and change. To do that, we would need the existing 946,000, the 135,000 LoSiP, and then 1.3 million and change out of the capital projects fund. So you'd still have the 200,000 and a little bit more left for fund balance out of there. And then as alternate bids, you would bid the playground and playground seating as alternate bids, to see what you have for LoSiP dollars. So that's doing all the skate park stuff in the base, and putting off the playground. And then moving on to D. There, we're looking at the base bid package, the skate park components except for F and I, the bowl and then I, and then keeping skateboard, skate park lighting, playground and playground seating. So trying to get the playground done early, you know, guaranteed, and then pushing off two components of the skate park. Just so you had that option of doing that playground upfront earlier, for sure. That total cost of the base items is 2.6 million. That would take the 946,000 existing available funds, 1.0, that should be 135, let me just, sorry. 135,000, and then, hold on a sec, I gotta correct that. I put this together right for the meeting, sorry about that. So we would need 1531518 out of capital projects. And again, there's 1.75. So that leaves, basically that leaves enough for the locker room, but uses up the rest of the fund balance. So again, that gets you all but two components of the skate park, which would then be alternate bids, that hopefully, that's a reasonable amount, that I would hope we'd have those ARPA funds, and then you'd get the playground and the playground seating upfront. So those are just some starting points for discussion, so you kind of have an idea of some of the things you could do, and you could go wherever you wanted to go. And I did include a motion for each one, but I now need to double-check that D to where that error was, to correct that if you were interested in it.
All right. Thank you for that presentation, and giving us some options, at least as starting points. So is there any councillor ready to discuss? Maybe we need some more time to look over some numbers. Councillor McBride?
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you. I mean, I think this is a tremendous project. I think when we started this, whenever it was, it was really focused on the skate park, so my intention is there. And I thank you for putting together the presentation, and thank you Town Manager Bert for this summary, it's very helpful. I personally just want to say, I'm not going to put a motion on the floor, I'm just giving my thoughts, and then we can go from there. I personally like option B, and I think the reason being is it covers the skate park, which is the majority of the focus, where I think, I at least thought this was going. And it also does include the skate parking, which is also a high priority, and it removes the F, which I believe in hearing, Town Manager Bert, that was a lower priority. So I think that would be the physically, the financially, I think, good move is to reduce that amount from that, so we're not taking too much from capital projects. I think the project, we initially approved somewhere around a million. This has taken us up over $2 million, so I think it's an expansion of the project, a large expansion of the project. But I would be in favor of it, because I think it accomplishes a lot of our goals. So that's kind of where I'm at right now, but I'm happy to, you know, listen to any of the councillors' thoughts, but that's kind of where I'm at for right now. Thank you.
Actually, Manager Bert, can I just ask you, each option has the total and the total alt bids? Can you just explain that total alt bids number?
The total is basically what you would actually approve now, that you would say, we want to authorize at least this much money. And then the alt bids is what you would look at once you know, once the bids, we solicit bids. What do you think a legitimate timeframe would be for receiving bids if we were moving forward? And remember, it's still, it'll take, you know, months to go through RTM before we'd have approval.
Well, and we still have to go through permitting and stuff like that. So we've probably got two months of permitting, at least, maybe three months of permitting, and then a month or two of bidding, so five or six months.
So we should definitely have the ARPA dollar amounts by then. So these are the alternates, and then you could look, okay, we end up not needing 600,000 of ARPA for the seawall, so you look and you see, okay, these are where each of these three pieces cost, and what can we do out of that? Or do we want to put more money from somewhere else? So you're only, would be approving the total that was in yellow, the rest would just be saying, I want to find out what those costs are.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Councillor Franco?
Thank you. I also agree with Councillor McBride that this all started because of the skate park. And they came to us and asked us for funding so they could do renovations. I also can agree that I could support option B. I am also in favor of option C. And would it be easy to just focus on the skate park all at once, and then do the additional bids for the playground area separately? Because I'm just talking construction-wise. My thought is, you do the whole skate park together, and if we have the funding for the park, we do it. But if not, I wouldn't want to do part of the skate park and then have to come back later to do it, just construction-wise of, how about we finish one thing before we move on to the other, unless we, ARPA funding comes in or other, the bids come in lower. What is your thoughts on that?
Well, I think our intent was to probably break the construction of the project, or even the big bids, into two pieces, right? So the skate park is a very specialty contractor, and we'll probably put it out to bid just to skate park work. And we will still probably bid it in the 11 pieces or something like that, right? So that we all know what those components can be. But that probably goes to one contractor, and then the rest of the park would be a different, separate bid. We'd still get all the alternate bids that we've talked about, so we have all those components. So on the very off-chance that things come in under budget, we still have the ability to build them if we have money to do so.
So we built part of the playground, and then we waited to do F. How do we get back to F to do that without disturbing so much of the park?
We can do it. I mean, that's part of what we did look at, is how to get around there. And for what you'd have to do for construction of F, you would have, you would be some disturbance to the lawn area, but none of the new improvements of the playground would be disturbed in order to put that component in.
All right. And then?
Just like we could put the skate park in and not the playground, there's going to be some interface there, where we're going to have to do some grading and some interim work between those two. We'd do the inverse if the playground went in in front of some piece of the skate park. I'd say it'd be more difficult, sorry, I don't want to cut you off, but if we did the playground and then say E as the last piece of the skate park, because that's right along there, it's completely landlocked, if you will, by all built environment, that would be hard. But F, F, G, H, and I, we have ways to get in there where we won't cause as much disturbance.
And if we put out to bid, and we have all these components from the skate park, will they give us a better deal because we're doing all these things all at once, and it's a big project? And they might give us a better deal than coming in to just say, just do F by itself?
So there is a scale of efficiency. Normally, they don't give you a better unit price, like a square foot price, but there's mobilization costs, there's insurance costs, all the things just to start a project, you'll, you could pay multiple times if you do it in multiple phases.
That's what I was getting at. That's what I was trying to say. Thank you, you said it so well. So I guess with that, I would probably lean more towards C, and that would probably finish off at least the skate park all in one. And then if we had additional funds, we can look at the playground options as well if we had, so I would lean towards C myself, just because of the additional funding that would cost, just to bring them back out again for that, for scale. Thank you.
Yep.
Councillor Jacome?
Thank you, Mayor. For example, for option B, I guess the question was, is it, option B, the F is the, that would be not included? That's the extension that we'd be adding? Is that correct?
Yeah, that is the, it's kind of a standalone bowl that could easily be taken off and put on later.
Okay. And then G, is that when we, when we did, when you did that walkthrough, I believe some of us went there, was that where there was the flooding?
That was where?
The corner that would flood constantly?
It would flood, it was the area where the drain was?
Yeah, correct.
Yep, over there in that right-hand corner.
I mean, I'd say it again, because we had the skaters come out, so I think the priority was, I mean, for me personally, was completely, completing the skater bowl, for me, is what I imagine, skate park included. So for me, the priority would be like the safety of the skate park and the skaters. So currently, I could support option B and option C, but I could see why, if we were to just do option B and then work around it, that that could, you know, affect the construction, so I can see why we could support option C. But right now, I think I'm leaning towards option B and option C. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chad. This is great. This is what we wanted the last time. You definitely delivered, and Town Manager put it together, all the, gives us lots of options, we can kind of figure things out. I know this is, you know, when this project began, it was really about the skate park, and trying to give them the best that they possibly could have, and they came with a lot of passion and great ideas to kind of help us build the skate park. And I think we've all kind of, I mean, certainly myself, but I think other councillors, too, we've really been focused on, let's make that work and make that really good. I like both B and C. I think it's, it sort of answers, it gets most of it done, C gets all of it done. My concern also is about, just like Councillor Franco, on F, kind of coming in later and doing F, just knowing how budgets and things go, we might, it might take a long time to get to F. You know, things tend to get pushed around. What does that do with, I guess my concern is, you know, making a smooth connection between the whole skate park and just one little park that we're doing, it could even be two years later, the way things go, is that?
Yep, so that particular feature, again, is almost like a completely isolated bowl, right? So it's, you would be able to basically come to the edge of the finish of the park, which would be the edge of G, and there'd be a little bit of a level landing, and then drop into the bowl that begins in F. So it's not, the rest of the park is very free-flowing, and all that you can ride from feature to feature and in and out of everything. This is, but the one thing they also, they don't have is a bowl. And if you'll remember, when we did that walk, they almost suggested that a freestanding bowl would be built over on the other side of the park by the basketball hoop. And we said, well, we don't want to spread things out too much, so we brought that feature over and kind of tacked it on the side. So it is the easiest component to be able to put in at a later date, because it doesn't require, I'll say, the flowing seams of concrete like everything else does.
Like what in the other sections?
Correct.
And that F, I guess is like 369,000 to do that. But that price, if we waited on that, would probably go up. I mean, that's sort of the price that we have now.
If we wait, whatever we waited on was going to go up.
It could be 500,000 by the time we, so there's a real incentive to, I mean, I'm just making up a number, but we've seen numbers just increasing and increasing.
Correct.
So there's incentive to do this, to do this now, at, you know, because of inflation.
Mr. Bert, again, thank you for putting all these options together. At the 1.4, so if we were making a motion on this, it would be that 1.468366.
Are you saying option C?
On option C, is that what the?
Yeah, yeah. And I prepared that motion.
Yeah, you can just read this whole.
You can just read that motion. Okay. I think I'm in favor of option C, and I'd like to put that motion on the floor.
Go ahead and read it.
Motion for option C, a move to approve additional 1,0468,366 for the Sutton Park project, including the base bid package and the skate park components, A through I, and the skate park lighting. Additional funds comes from the 135,000 LoSiP, and 1,333,366 from capital projects fund balance, additionally to solicit alternative bid options for the playground and the playground seating.
Second, Franco?
Option C moved by Councillor Jones, seconded by Franco.
And just, guys?
Yeah, you got time.
The reason we're doing the additional bids, just so we kind of get a real good sense of how much they're going to cost, and depending what happens in the future with ARPA money or other money, we can go.
We should know that by the time those bids will be back.
We're ready to go, is really what you're saying, is that if we, if we get it, we can go, and if not, we can't. Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councillor Gajewski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, thank you to the Town Manager for providing this packet. One quick question for the Town Manager. On option, I was looking at all the options, and on option D, I just want to see, is this a typo for LOCIP?
Yeah, I mentioned that one.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I must have just missed that then.
Went through and made the corrections.
Okay. And then the capital projects fund balance would just be, like, I have 1531518. All right. So I have reviewed all the options, and I agree with Councillor Jones's assessment that I feel like option C is the best bang for our buck. It does the skate park, and then I also feel like it's just easier to solicit bids separate for the playground than it is different sections of the playground, skate park, sorry. So I am in favor of Councillor Jones's motion of doing option C. So I am in favor of Counsel Jones's motion of doing option C. And that is that. Thank you for all your work and I look forward to seeing the project done.
Thank you. Counsel Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question to the town manager. How much would that leave if we're doing that in our capital funds?
One second.
Thank you.
A little over 400,000.
Okay, and that's enough for everything else?
Yes, of course, until we rebid, we don't know the exact cost of the locker room. But we felt 200,000 should hopefully be sufficient. We are actually trying to pare that project down a bit, too. HVAC is very expensive right now.
Yes, it is. Thank you, that was all.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counsel McBride?
Yeah, just one comment. I mean, I'm not totally opposed to option C. I just feel like it's November and we have a lot of time left in the year. And I would be in favor of a capital fund balance of over 750,000 versus 400,000. So that was the only reason I wanted to propose that, was I'd like to leave a little bit more money in there. But I'm in favor of the overall project and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. See no further discussion. I'll call for a vote on option C. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
McBride?
Okay, carries eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstaining, McBride. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
I'd like to review the motion, I'd like to just add one thought on it. I just found out today, and this was, by the way, at the request of the mayor that I put this in. So this is coming from him and I tried to take his direction on what I put together. Colonel Ledger, as you know, recently sold. That was, so we just received a check for 41,000. We have allocated, decided where to put that. This could be a good thing to seed that 41,000 from selling a property towards affordable housing projects in the future. So that could be part of a motion if you wanted. I have to give some direction pretty quick to Dee Morrison on where to deposit that at.
Okay. So first thing I'm going to do, I'm going to put the motion on the floor. I make a motion to move to recommend a creation of an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, AHTF, to be utilized to assist with emergency rental assistance, gap financing for new construction of affordable units, repairs, rehabilitation of older affordable home units, home slash units, weatherization programs to lower utility costs, down payment and closing assistance for closure prevention and lead abatement. Eligible funding will include local taxes, grants, and donations. Funds will be under the supervision of the town manager and implemented utilizing programs and projects to be established by the town council in the future. So move.
Second, Bordelon.
Moved by Melendez and seconded by Bordelon. Okay, so I'll just speak briefly on this. As the town manager mentioned, this was recommended in, and in your background, it was recommended in the, the town's Affordable Housing Plan from 2022. One of the things, if you, if you read that document, one of the things recommended in there was to establish an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. This came before the council, maybe about a year ago. It did not come to a vote. However, I will say the difference between it coming to the council then and coming to the council now is then, when it came to the council, it was attached to a funding source. This time, it is not. So there's no funding source for this in this motion. It will essentially, at this point, just be an account sitting there. And the benefit of it being there is, as it says in here, we can apply for grants to fund this. People can donate to it if they wish to. And if you set up, say, how like we have the CIP every year in the budget where you put money aside for the, to buy open space if you want every year. There's like a $25,000 budget line. You choose to fund it or you don't fund it. That could be something that happens. That's not something that's in here saying that you would be in the budget process. Basically what I'm saying, you can fund this different ways, grants, donations, local taxes, if you choose to do so. So this is essentially setting up a fund. It was recommended in our plan that we adopted. I just think that it's very important to have this set up so that we can start moving towards making Groton more affordable again. It is becoming less and less affordable daily. And maybe this can be a little help on that.
So at this point, it's just a collection point. Now, if we put the, if you wanted to put the 41,000, for instance, if Marge came back and gave her needs, you could opt to then use those funds toward that or whatever. But we can start accumulating for, but nothing we could spend without the council deciding where they wanted to spend the dollars.
Very good. Any discussion? Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Town Manager Burton, do we currently have, I'm just reading through the list here, emergency rental assistance, gap financing, repairs. Are these things sort of, I know we do some of these things, they kind of scattered in other programs at the moment. Is this kind of pulling them all together into one?
Well, you know, we have dedicated community development block grants for some of that. Those will remain totally separate. That's a totally separate program. This will be, you know, basically for things not covered in other programs so that you could create whatever it is, you know, let's say you built up money from donations and you wanted to offer an incentive, you know, selling a property to, you know, try to get affordable housing, whatever you wanted, you know, you can set up in the future if you wanted to do a home loan program or, you know, something, whatever you want.
But it's a bucket to sort of collect, collect money, okay.
Just like we have, you know, of course, it's not as broad with our economic development fund, you know, we collect, we put money in there. But until we, something is brought to you to say you want to spend it, nothing gets spent. It's just, we took the wording for uses right out of the Affordable Housing Plan that was adopted. So we tried to mirror that.
Is there sort of a dollar amount you're trying to get to that you think would be a good sort of level to be able to do some of these things?
Well, until you know the programs you want to do, there's, you know, it's hard to know, you know, where, you know, where you want to put money. Let's say we went through selling a couple more properties. Let's say you got a decent amount of money, you know. There's a big difference between having 40,000 and having like 2 million, you know, gives you a lot more options. So it's really ultimately, what does the council want? Do you want to, as we get things and you, you know, funding and you give some thought to it? We'll have more discussions, I'm sure.
And does it take any money away from the other programs that we're doing? I mean, they still have however they're funded. That all still keeps on going. It doesn't change anything, so, okay, all right, thank you.
Counsel Bordelon?
Thank you. I think this is a, I mean, I definitely think it needs to be fine tuned. I think this is a starting point, in my opinion. I think there are ways in which you can, it'd be great to have this account started because you could work with developers. And some people in their RFPs make it defined that 1% will go into this for every property sold or every deal negotiation with a developer. A developer can come into the town. Some of the things I'm reading, develop, you know, the town says, we need affordable housing. And they say, you know what, what can we do to help? And not only are they providing a percent of their housing to be affordable, they're willing to give some money back to the community as they're building higher cost infrastructures that are meeting the needs of people making six figures. They're also willing to give back to the people who are struggling to stay and not be maxed out. So this would be a way to have a place. We'd have to work on that language down the road, maybe as a referral or maybe-
Yeah, any programs you want to create, you would do referrals or establish the parameters of that particular program to fall under this.
Right, and I think that would be helpful. I don't know if there'd be a working group, maybe to look at how we would structure this. But I think any way that we're going to be helping, as people are saying, folks are getting maxed out of this town. Also, definitely a need for first time buyers, folks that are, you know, assistants. A lot of folks have a reasonable income but don't have the savings to be able to put the down payment on closing costs and stuff. So again, is this basic language or are we going to be held to this language when we're voting on this?
This is the very generic, broad language, just allows us to start capturing. But you could have any number of programs under it. You could, you know, you could have 10 different programs and you set exact parameters for each one of those programs. And then late, and then in addition, you'll eventually, you know, decide how you want to win if you fund any of those programs. This is just a broad, just so we can start accumulating some dollars, so.
Yeah, I think this is definitely a great start. I'd love to see where this can grow. And if we do form a working group, I'd love to be a part of it to help generate ideas and ways to help folks. Because other ways are, I'm seeing from state level, is helping folks remove to, move to renewable, get off of fossil fuels because they're able then to afford, you know, their heating costs better. I know that, you know, the cost this year, people were talking about the cost of keeping their house cool this summer. Folks were spending hundreds of dollars that they normally weren't used to just to stay comfortable. So there's a lot of things that go into that affordability. But definitely making sure folks can retain their homes. So I think this is great. I'm interested to see where it goes. I think, I'm excited to develop the language. And I think it's vital to our community to have all different types of programs for all different sectors of, sections of town and for, you know, equality for all on all financial levels. You know, a lot of the seniors I talked to in this last, you know, time being out there talking to folks was they are getting maxed out on their taxes. Their taxes keep going up and they can't afford their own houses that they've had for so long. So anyway, I'll take my second turn.
And like, once there were programs established, yeah, I could see putting a link on our website to donate money to this fund and get that promoted or doing drives for certain projects, that kind of thing.
Counsel McBride?
Yeah, this is great. I'm very happy to see this. I've worked in, in the past with rental assistance programs and down payment plans. So I'm looking forward to moving this forward. But one other thing I just want, can we, can we add things to this in the future such as a revolving loan program? And the reason I mentioned that, I felt it was in the details, because this is, a lot of times we look at this and it's a cost, so we kind of shy away from it because it's a dollar, a dollar cost. But if we could add revolving loan program, that is self, self perpetuating fund that once it's funded, people can get loans and it continues to fund itself. So if we could maybe just add that component as well, that would be helpful.
And I was with the municipality that had that program and it was very successful.
Yeah, they're, they're great because you don't have to, once the money's there, it's self perpetuating. That was all, thank you, looks great.
Yeah, I mean, this could be amended anytime easily by the council. When she came up with a new idea for a program, hey, I think that actually would be a great fit under this. You alter this and then do the language for the program.
Counsel Giacomo?
Thank you, Mayor. Kind of like what, I think you might have answered it with Counsel Jones, but maybe I didn't understand. Was the, we already have an emergency rental assistance. Do we not have a fund for that? Like, we already have a bucket of some sort with human services?
Well, it was a direct donate. It's, I think that's the perk, the Floa Perkins Fund, which is running out in the next, was it 18 months? Did you say or so? So that's almost, now, what we'd probably do is, we wouldn't spend money directly out of this for human service functions. What you would do is say, once Floa Perkins is out, and you really can't co-mingle these, we really need to create some sort of line item there. And then you would say, oh, we're accumulating money here. You do, you know, a motion for 50,000 to be moved from this until where you're going to actually expend it at, you know.
Yeah, I mean, kind of my, my idea is you see this as a, as almost as that new bucket that would kind of hold everything together and can go-
Until you put it where you want it.
Correct. So I, I mean, this is great, so I can see myself supporting it. Is there, Mayor, is there a current number on here?
No.
For a funding source?
It'll just be the account.
No, I would, you know, if you want to consider 41, you know, as part of that, I meant to add the 41,000 for Colonel Ledger. Otherwise, we'll just put that in a general fund. But it's just a nice way, we're probably going to need some funds, you know, for some sort of purposes soon. So it's nice to get a little bit, you know, it's very minimal, it doesn't, it's not built into our budget for revenue, so it's a nice place to put that.
So I guess my question would be, if we wanted to use, was it 41,000 from Colonel? Would you feel comfortable using the whole amount or half amount?
Well, I'd like to see, you know, Marge is working on an analysis of any needs. I'd like to see where that comes in. I think for now, you just put it here and then what she has, you know, maybe it's 60,000 she needs. Okay, we're going to take this from here and another 19,000 for contingency, you know. It could be 20,000 she needs and there's no need to move it all out yet. I do think that's something, though, that we need to give more thought to each year in the budget is, is, you know, putting a lot more funds into that department for helping people.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is you do want the money, it would be helpful.
Yeah, it'd be helpful, yeah, put the money here. I'm sure we'll, we'll have-
Well, it would be used or not. I mean, we could always use it as a, as a pinpoint of whether the fund can use it or not. Okay, so with that, I'll, I'll put the amended motion on the, on the floor.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I've got an amended motion by Counsel Giacomo to add the 41,000 dollars.
He didn't say it's amended motion.
But yes, I mean, it would include the 41,000 from the Colonel Ledger school.
To include the 41,000, Counsel Giacomo, seconded by Counsel Bordelon. Okay, Counsel Gieske?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Manager Burke. I love this program, especially being a younger person. And the availability of homes in our town is dwindling and the housing supply is a great need. And to offer assistance for that, I greatly appreciate. My question is, is this possibly available to do an endowment with it? Or merge with a?
Yeah, we, you know, let's say, just like under human service, like we have the Floa Perkins Fund, which was an endowment, we just create a separate, whatever the, the right term is, but a separate project code or, you know, underneath. Because obviously you don't want a co-mingle fund, so you'd have a sec, you know, you track it separately. And somebody might say, I want to donate this money specifically for one subset of this. So you'd need to make sure you track that completely separate in there. But it could fall under that general fund, though.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Bordelon?
It's my understanding as well that this would also open up opportunities for grants, correct? Isn't there some state grants right now under the structure that I, what I've been researching and found? So we would be able to apply for some assistance to, especially with the first time home buyer and some of those types of things. One of the incentives from the state is trying to get folks in, you know, homeownership, which, you know, people might take as a luxury, you know, or just not even think of it at all. But a lot of people struggle to achieve that. So is there a possibility that we would be able to also find other revenue sources that way?
Certainly possible, especially if we do ever get in a grant position, grants position.
I think one of the other biggest problems I find is knowledge. And I think knowledge is power. And a lot of things, people don't realize that we have because of the advertising. So is this something, how are we planning? It's one thing to, to, to create it, but how do we plan to roll it out? How, what are we going to do to advertise this? What are we going to say, you know? What is the application process going to look like?
Well, until you have funds in it, you're not really doing an application process. But, and you have to first establish, the council will have to decide what programs are interested, interested in in the first place. I think that's at the point where you figure out, okay, we might put a certain amount of our, of tax dollars towards it, plus try to fundraise and, you know. I think there's a lot of steps that still have to occur. This is very, you know, just a very first step towards, you know, a bigger thing.
Right, right. And so that's where I think it'll be interesting to see where we take this as far as, you know, explaining it and putting it out there for the general public. Because it, it could open up people who are interested in donating as well, so. But yeah, I do think, you know, that this, this bullet point would grow. I mean, the list of things I can think of that are not here, you know, I think this is a starting point. But I do think that there's a lot of things that are missing on here that need to be added. And I'm fully discussed and obviously we won't be able to do that tonight. But, you know, I think it's a good direction. And, you know, especially because there's a lot of seniors as well that are struggling to afford. They're seeing an increase in elder homelessness right now with people that are struggling. And they've been our long-term taxpayers in our town. And a lot of the people I've been speaking to have, are very concerned about, every time the tax rate goes up, they're going to fix income, they can afford their home. And the next year, they wonder if they're going to be able to. And that was my concern about the food thing. They might be over income, but they just fell in a hole for that month. So as we're seeing an increase for food, there's definitely an increase for people affording all avenues. Also, there's a lot of folks who live in houses that can't afford to- So there's programs, you know, this, this would open up doors for that, so, thank you for that.
Counsel Parker, is that your name?
Counsel Parker?
Hi, I like the program. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. There are other options, TVCCA does help, so we might want to get some guidance from them, that they do a lot of this stuff, cause they also did during COVID, the help with people so they couldn't, didn't lose their homes, so they helped with everything. So if we need any additional guidance, I think we could reach out to TVCCA to see how they did it. Just a suggestion and considering I'm on the board, I, they have a lot of programs that we can tap into and they can provide additional guidance. If they need, if you found out that families need help with their boiler system, they can reach out to TVCCA. Again, I am very happy with what we've started with this, cause like you said, you said two thousand, twenty-two, we started this, and we're gonna start this program and I'm really happy for it, so that's all I have to say, thank you.
And I do think that's a very good point. You know, as you establish programs, you of course wanted to know, are we duplicating efforts? And let's say TVCCA was doing a program we're not and we're interested in and we think there's more money needed, it could always be a grant to TVCCA rather than trying to duplicate the effort, so there's definitely a, you know, variety of options.
Counsel Franco?
Thank you. I like that we're coming up with something, with an idea like this. My concern is that there's no direction in here, there's no way for anybody to even, we have no policy, there's no process, there's no, even to say who's gonna do what, like, is everybody just gonna come to you and say, hey, I need some money?
Well, again, we're not gonna be, you're gonna have to establish programs for this scenario.
Right, so my concern is that, and it says the entity administering the funds, and my, my question is, like, who's gonna be that entity? Is it a committee that we already have? Like, we use economic development funds and the EDC does oversee those and make recommendations and we pass them here. There's other things that, people that needed assistance, they actually have to come to us and ask as well. They fill out the application, it's approved, and then they come to us and we do the finalized approval. And these are the type of things that I would, I personally think we should work some of these out prior to us passing this, cause like, I don't know, there's a community development as advisory committee and they do things with housing as well, I don't know if they have.
Again, this is just, so we have somewhere to put like the forty-one thousand, I think we need this first, you will just design programs after that and dictate, I don't think those are needed prior to this piece.
I understand that, but, so you're gonna lock the funds in here until we can actually figure out what we're gonna do?
It could always transfer at any point, you know, it's a little bit easier than having a co-mingle with the general fund.
Okay, um, cause there's things in here, I see like repairs and rehabilitation to older affordable homes units and weatherization programs to lower utility cost, and there's also another loan program that the town has, is doing right now just for those specific things and where people can apply, and if they qualify, they get a zero percent interest rate and it's up to thirty-five thousand dollars in a loan and they don't have to pay it back until either they, they are deceased or they sell their property. So there's things like that that can help with these. Sometimes I, I look at a down payment and closing assistance and their state offers those type of things as well as banks. And like, um.
And I think we want. Sorry, go ahead.
Counsel Parker said, like, TVCCA helps, there's other state programs with like lead abatement and, and so my thought was, there was also some discussion on whether maybe human services might need some of this money. And granted, like you said, we could transfer it, but I, I just, I'm not sure why we're, I'm not exactly sure why we're doing this tonight without, like, working on this for a couple of meetings and trying to come up with a good formula and then do it, I don't know, like, why we couldn't just work on this in a couple of COW meetings and then pass it.
It's up to the council. I think you want this to be as broad as possible so that if you have a successful program, like, something in plan, you can move money to that, you know, if, let's say that we're on money, but we get donations, I think you want it to be very broad at this point and for this base fund and don't restrict it, you know, I.
I'm not saying restrict it, I'm saying, like, there's, it says the entity administering it, we don't even know who an entity administering it is gonna be.
Yeah, I just wouldn't look, it's just like the economic fund, it's just, it's nothing until you create programs and have it, this is nothing, you know, it's, I, I think you're putting a little too much, you know, thought into this. It's a very basic catch-all fund, you know, it's just somewhere so we know to throw money at and then we decide what to do with it, just like with economic open space fund, it's, you know, it's a pretty normal process to first establish the fund.
Okay.
It's up to the council.
Counsel Parker, is that another hand?
Uh, well, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I hear Counsel Franco's concerns, but on the same token, we've been talking about trying to establish something about affordable housing, this will help. So I'm okay with us establishing something and then working out the details after because I think we're gonna need more guidance from other organizations to make sure we're doing what's correct for our town and hence why I mentioned TVCCA, and there's probably a few others that we can reach out to, other towns that probably already have this, and I believe Mr. Burke said that he had already did this before, so I'm okay with establishing something right now, so, thank you.
And again, anything you create for a program or expenditure won't actually be out of this fund, you're just moving it to other programs, other departments, it's more like a contingency fund, but where it's restricted to general affordable housing type uses, that's all it is. Nothing, you're not gonna, you know, anything you write for programs isn't gonna be in this description, it's gonna be separate from it. All you're gonna say, the only thing you would decide is if you wanted to add in more ideas, which can be done later, I also want it to have the revolving loan fund, that's what you're gonna do if you spend another meeting on it. I would not say you would create programs for this at this point.
Okay, Counsel Franco?
So you're saying we're gonna put money in here and just say the loan program we have with a zero percent interest. If they need more funds, we can take it out of here and move it over to that, is that what you're saying this is, this is about?
It's wide open, it's just, you just wanna list all the possible things that could, you know, that it could be used for.
So when you're saying contingency fund, or just, it's a holding tank?
Yes.
It is not a poli, it's not a program?
It's not a policy, it's not.
It's not a program?
Right.
It's holding it, and if, let's just say, human services come and says, we need more money for rental assistance, you take it out here and move it to there, so this is a holding tank?
Yeah.
Not quite, cause when it's saying, when you wrote it, it says the entity administering the funds, so that makes it sound like there, this is supposed to be some kind of program.
And I took that from, we had that language the last time I looked at it, maybe I'll strike that, it's fine.
All right, I'm just, that's the part that was setting me back, cause I'm like, this is saying it's basically, it's a program that we're doing, but we have no, nothing in writing to explain it or even how to go about getting it. So this, you're saying to me right now, it's a contingency, money goes in and then we will disperse it to other programs.
Other programs, correct.
Understood, thank you.
You know, and I'm totally comfortable striking that last sentence, I think you could take that right out if it makes people more comfortable.
I'm seeing that sentence in the background, I'm not seeing it in the motion, where is it in the motion?
The last slide, the funds would be under the supervision of the town manager, et cetera. Though I think it says establishing in the future, so, again, I think it's okay.
Yeah, I think what Counsel Franco was reading was the entity administering the fund in the background.
Right, and whatever program or entity that is, you know, these, it's, these are lawful uses, if someone has a program that falls under this use, you can move money from this to that program or entity.
Yeah, this is just the, this is just an account.
Yeah, it's just an account.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote, all in favor say, oh, let me just, we're voting first on Counsel Jacom's amendment to include the forty-one thousand dollars, so. Calling for a vote on that, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Now we will vote at, on the main motion as amended, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Thank you. Onto the Town Council, twenty twenty-four regular meeting calendar. I make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the twenty twenty-four Town Council regular meeting, meeting calendar as attached, so moved.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Jones. Counsel Franco?
So historically, we've changed some dates due to like primaries, and I'm not sure if this council would like to or would not, but April second is the presidential primary, I have no problem working through the presidential primary, so, I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention if other people have issues with it.
Could there be also a primary, I'm not, I didn't look at the dates, what if there was a primary in the town, right, we're up for a state office as well?
I looked up those dates, I didn't see anything conflicting.
Point of information, it is on August thirteenth, so it's on the next calendar that we're doing.
Yeah, these are the first Tuesday.
Yeah, there's nothing conflicting on this one when I looked at those.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. I make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the twenty twenty-four Town Council Committee the whole regular meeting calendar as attached, so moved.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Jones. Counsel McBride?
Yeah, I just have a, a, a point, in the past, over the last year or so, we've had questions or, or several councillors had concerns that we've had meetings when the P and Z Commission had meetings, so I just wanted to bring it up for discussion. I looked at the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings and they have meetings the second and the fourth, so if it's a concern of the council that, you know, with their work that they're involved, especially with the SDRs, should, is there any interest in this council considering the fourth Tuesday of the month, having it earlier than having the mayor or the council determine if they want a recess and go to that P and Z Commission meeting? I'm just mentioning it because it's come up in the past and I didn't know if there was any interest in the council, you know, participating in that Planning and Zoning meeting.
Okay, Counsel Bordelon?
Um, I had, at the beginning of the council sent in a, I believe it was a referral and a request to the town manager asking that we put forward something to Planning and Zoning and seeing like if they would change or not, or if we would change, or just have it around the table, but it's never come before the council to discuss. I do think as a councillor, it is hard to know exactly what's going on when a lot of the important things that we vote on and have to make decisions on are on nights that we're here. It is great that things are recorded to re-watch, but I do think at times it can be a conflict, so I guess, question to the town manager, where does that request that I sent stand or what can we do to talk about that?
It did not get support at the time.
Right, so I did send something forward because one of the concerns from P and Z was council involvement, council knowledge, and as you know, this is a free job that we do and, you know, going on multiple nights, it would be nice to be able to attend on a different night and not have to re-watch the video. I find that decisions are being made on nights that we're sitting here and I get home and then I re-watch or, you know, I have recorded the P and Z meeting, whatever it was airing, and then I find the, you know, the concerns and it's already after the fact. So i- i- it's the way it's been working, it does cause great concern and I have brought it up, but it did not receive the support of councillors to come as an agenda item at the time. I'm happy to resend that in and at least bring it up for discussion and hopefully I'll get the support under our rules from councillors to at least have the discussion around the table. But I, I agree, I think, you know, to do our job efficiently, we have to have the knowledge and so, what nights do they exactly meet, Town Manager?
The second and fourth Tuesdays, so on this, we meet on the second Tuesday and the fourth, so they align, this, these are, this is our COW agenda, so every month, this is the second and the fourth, so these are the dates that they meet, except for Monday, August twelfth, you know.
And they meet at seven PM, I believe.
And looking at other models in different towns, they, they purposely do not have these on the same dates so that it's broader involvement and also that way, you know, the P and Z meeting can run live and councillors can be engaged and, so I do think it really cripples us by having it structured like this. So again, I, I will send my referral again, maybe under the council, people will take interest.
I mean, this, this would be the time to change the schedule for next year for the council.
But we can't make P and Z, correct? We can't make P and Z tonight change their schedule?
We can't make them change their schedule with the council referral, they set their schedule.
Maybe a request to them, right?
We, we can't make them meet when we want them to meet.
So I guess the council, the question to the manager, what could we do to alter this that would work?
We can change when we meet.
Right.
That's what I was asking him, what, under this structure?
Wednesdays, you'd have to probably do Mondays instead.
You can either do Mondays, you could do Wednesdays, you could.
Wednesdays are pretty conflicted, or T M and other things, I, I couldn't do Wednesdays.
Right, so you could change, so.
Mondays are pretty much it.
So you could change, and, and you'd have to get the support of the council, I'm just saying, like, you could change the fourth Tuesday to the third Tuesday and then.
The board of that isn't here on Mondays though, for their meetings.
Yeah, there you go, so there's.
Only once a month though, man, they're not here every Monday.
There's a lot of reasons why we do the things the way we do, but, okay. Counsel Franco?
As it's been stated that it would be nice to change the dates because councillors could participate with Planning and Zoning Commission, it also has been noted, notated that we could have involvement and council knowledge and engagement, and from my understanding, we are legislative, they are regulatory, and as council, and I thought by law, we cannot unduly influence the Planning and Zoning Commission. So when they say we can go over there and participate with them, we don't just go over and participate and, we're not liaisons to them.
Maybe more as a citizen than a councillor.
You can only speak as a citizen and that is it, and, but we as the council, cause it says the council could participate, I've heard that, and I, we cannot go over and just go participate with the Planning and Zoning Committee, we just can't. There are state statutes involving all these things, they make decisions that there are lots of legal consequences to, that we can't just go over and have a seat at the table with them. So if we ever wanted to have a workshop with them, that would be different and that would be something that would have to be like scheduled to work maybe on regulations in the town or something, but typically we can't go participate with them. So I would be supporting the dates on this that are notated right here, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Jacom.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, it's my understanding per statute that, you know, the P and Z votes on their own schedule and, you know, submitted to the town clerk, and if they really, I think, got a consensus from the community that their time wasn't well attended or something, that they could move it, then I think they could pick a better date and time, that's their choice as a commission, also that, anytime it, I think we, this council has done it, we've moved dates here as well, so we could always amend in the future if there's enough consensus, but everything's consensus, so I think the dates are fine, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a question, I'm, I'm actually gonna make an amended motion. We do not participate in the primary election day because that's not for us, cause we just had our election, so why did we switch it? Why can't we not have it reg, on our regular Tuesday?
August twelfth?
August twelfth to make it back to August thirteenth.
Um, I think that's just precedent, I mean, yeah, it's, it's not a, it's not a local election, but we've done, we've made that change on federal election years and local election years, it's not strictly necessary obviously to do it that way, that's just been the precedent.
Okay, so my motion is to set that, keep all the other dates, but move that Monday, August twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, to add to. Keep all the other dates, but move that Monday, August 12th, 2024 to, back to August 13th, 2024.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second, Franco.
Motion by Parker, seconded by Franco, to meet on Tuesday, August 13th, 2024, rather than Monday, August 12th, 2024. Councilor Parker, are you finished?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Councilor Bordelon?
Oh, thank you. I mean, you know, it was taken out of context, participate, but participate, Mike, being there, writing your notes and being knowledgeable of what the planning and zoning is doing as a councillor, I think, is our job. And that's what I meant. It's not altering, but a lot of times we're told that we don't know what's going on and it's important that we do when things are coming before us. So that, that is my understanding and I just wanted to correct what was stated. It's not participate, no, not gonna be up there talking. But as a citizen, if there was a, if there was a zoning happening in your neighborhood or something, yes, as a citizen, you could speak on that night if there was a hearing or something in that area as a citizen. And I think that's important. And it's also important to go out there and listen to the citizens that are there, maybe speaking and understanding what's going on. So that I feel is an obligation and that was my concern with conflict. So just to clear that up, no, it's not to participate. I understand the difference between a resident and, you know, being able to go. And that, that's, you know, I think taken out of context a lot in a lot of our meetings is that we are residents taxpayers first and, and they're, you know, it is important to have the accessibility and the availability to listen to our constituents and/or attend. And so, again, and I've heard planning and zoning, when they came before us, when we did the other things, is that they feel like council wasn't involved, they don't, they're not, you know, they don't, we're not, you know. So I think that would open up that opportunity.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. And just a reminder, we're voting on changing the Monday, August 12th, 2024 to the August 13th, 2024. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Carries eight in favor, one opposed, Bordelon, zero abstaining. So now we will vote on the calendar as amended. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. Carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto the Town Council Personnel and Appointments Committee 2024 regular meeting calendar. I make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the 2024 Town Council Personnel and Appointments Committee regular meeting calendar as attached, so moved.
Second, Jacome.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Jacome. Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions.
Volts you adjourned?
Carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. I got a motion to adjourn by Councilor Parker.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Jacome. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. We're adjourned unanimously at nine forty-two.
Nine forty-two.